Welcome in the meeting of the Westboro Select Board, it being beyond six o'clock. Like to offer to anyone who would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And I'd also like to thank Westboro TV for live streaming and recording this for further viewing. With that said, I'll move on to item two of the agenda, which is the reorganization of the board. And I'll open it up for discussion for, for the board.
Do you want to tell people what we're doing?
Oh, sorry. It is, yeah, yeah. So it is the tradition of the Westboro Select Board that upon the, after the, the first board meeting after the elections, we reorganize the board with a new chair and new vice chair. So I would just like to say thank you to everyone for supporting me in my chairmanship. Hopefully, I've done the job that was, was needed to get us where we are today over the past year. So with that said, I'll just open it up to the board for any discussion or motions that would like to be made.
I move to appoint Ian Johnson as chair.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Are you willing?
Sure.
You're willing, okay.
Willing and able.
Willing and able.
I'm unable, but.
I was just going with the willing. All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll look for a vote. All those in favor. Congratulations, Ian. That said, we'll, chair, switch around and.
Do you want to, you're good to move that way for now?
Sure.
Okay. We'll have musical chairs here.
Yes.
Junk here.
Yeah.
There you go. Perfect. I don't want to be confused with you.
Good thing we don't have robes or something.
Great. So now we have a chair, and since I was vice chair, we need to move to nomination election of a vice chair is, is a discussion or motion?
I will move to support Shelby Marshall as vice chair. Second.
Any willing and able?
Willing and able.
All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, Patrick, thank you for your work this past year as chair. Great job. Okay, at this point, a little bit off our normal agenda, but we'll open it up for open forum. Is anybody here for open forum?
Hi, Joanne Aramini, Seven Meadow Road. I'm here to get some answers to the questions that I asked at the March 6th meeting. So the first question was, I was wondering, I had asked if the selectmen had sent a.
Is the microphone on?
Yeah, it's a green light. Can you hear? Better?
Yeah, it's better.
Thank you. Better, yeah. Okay, sorry. Okay, so I'm here to get some answers to the questions that I asked at the March 6th meeting. I had asked if the select board had sent a written memo to the planning board about the action items that you all agreed upon at the February 25th meeting. I haven't heard anything. I've watched the planning board meetings, looking around online, I see absolutely no information about that. Are you able to answer that?
No, not in open forum, because open forum is for us to listen, but it's not for a discussion or debate that would have to be an agenda item. But we can take that.
Can you put that on the agenda?
Exactly. Or we can provide information post this. So if you want to go through, we'll make sure we have a list and.
I mean, he just wanted to give me the question. Do you want to email me the questions? I gave it to you in writing at that meeting.
On, on March?
March 6th. Was that the meeting, fifth, sixth, something like that?
We had a meeting on March 4th. That's why I was.
Okay, March 4th. I'm sorry. I apologize.
It was March 6th.
It was a Thursday meeting, I think.
Oh, Thursday meeting. Yeah. Okay.
I submitted those questions in writing.
Oh, this was when I was remote. That's why.
I believe those are the notes, Sheila, that I brought into you later, handwritten notes, or the typed up notes that she provided. So.
We owe you a call up.
Yes, our apologies for that.
Okay, I will accept your apology, because it's a little disappointing. Okay. Second question was, I had Don Byrne, a member of the Act of Transportation Safety Committee, threatened Vice Chair Marshall at a meeting. He also went to another town, misrepresented himself using Westboro documents after he has been told before in the past not to do that. And I, this is against town policy, and I had asked for you all to hold him accountable for his behavior, like you would anybody else. And again, I've not seen anything or heard anything, and there have been subsequent meetings. So, any answer for that, please?
Yeah, we will get that to you.
Okay. Is this going to be by email, or are you going to put that on the agenda as well?
I just think it's important that we understand that there are lots of agenda items, and so sometimes things do rise to the, to be on the agenda, even though they've brought them up tomorrow.
Well, this is a really expensive project, and it's gotten a lot of attention, and a lot of people are interested in it. It's been asked at the candidate night. It's, you all know where it's at. I don't understand why it's not on the agenda.
Because we are, so we are approving the meeting minutes tonight of the March 4th meeting, where the BWALT was extensively discussed by this board. I believe you were at that meeting. During that meeting, there was a specific motion of, from the board about our town manager taking an inventory of current transportation projects to be presented to the board, and then to further consider creating an ad hoc committee around kind of transportation projects. I would anticipate that that will lead to further discussion around the Act of Transportation Safety Committee and kind of its future. So it is on our docket. It, the, you know, any action since the last meeting that you're referring to has not taken place. You know, town meeting was a bit more of a priority. So I just, so no one has lost sight of it, less me as liaison to that committee.
Okay. All well and good, and I appreciate that, but I'm talking about this Don's behavior.
Yep.
I'm not talking about the roles and the responsibilities of the committee.
No, and we're well, we're well aware of that.
Okay, great. Third question is related to the grant application, the 75% for Section 2, that nobody knew about. And I had asked if the board would consider sending a letter to rescind that application to the Mass Trails. Any answer on that? Have you considered that at all?
No answer at this point, but we can address that.
Yes, if you could, I would appreciate it. You know, we don't have a 25% that's done, and we have a major issue with the BWALT going through the treatment plant site as well. And also, maybe today in your updates, and I hate to bother you with it, but it's really hard to know what you're going to be talking about in the updates, because it's not specified. If you could please update us on what happened at the working committee between the treatment plant and some of you guys, so we know what's happening, and not just in relation to expansion, but about the trail going through the plant. Okay?
Thank you.
Could I just ask a question?
Yes.
Could I get a copy of those written questions?
Yeah, I, yes, we all need them. Yeah.
Oh, we all need them?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
Yeah, give them all to Sheila.
Okay, just, I wasn't sure if I was the only one.
You'll get them.
Perfect. Am I also open forum?
Is that working? Yeah. Kevin Barry, eight Indian Pond Road. Congrats again, Patrick, and welcome, Mark. If I may, just one quick recap, or what Joanne discussed in regards to the ATSC meeting, and our complaint with respect to the policy against harassment and discrimin, anti-discrimination. We brought forth that, that comment back in February 11th. So it wasn't just March 4th. It's actually now three meetings that has been brought, and nothing has happened. It's never been on an agenda issue, except for discussing about ATSC. But with this particular individual, Don Byrne, and the comments that were made, and the general tone of that meeting, we brought forth a comment, a comment back in February 11th. So, if I may. Secondly, my, my kind of discussion is more of a follow-up of the March 6th meeting and my presentation with respect to this submission of the Mass Trails grants. In particular, it's in response to the town manager's response to me, which with open forum policy, I didn't get a chance to rebut that. But unfortunately, they were able to make a rebuttal to what I had said. Bottom line is, the response, I feel, is disingenuous, and it contradicts every aspect of disclosure of grant seeking and application seeking process with pretty much any other meeting, any other board. And as you know, we've attended numerous boards for a number of different months, and at any given time, whether it be Economic Development Committee, Planning Board, and Select Board meeting, there's open discussion about grants that are being submitted, are going to be submitted, or have been submitted. Yet this, for some reason, I think intentional, was never disclosed, and still has not been publicly disclosed. With that, we feel that with the heightened awareness of this project, even to the fact that four candidates for Select Board had to address a question about BWALT, that this should have been brought to somebody's attention prior to it being submitted, because the case, it was originally disclosed as $400,000. It ballooned to $625,000. So that's a 56% increase, $225,000 more, yet one person, planning department or planning director, chose it upon themselves to submit this application with having a full-out discussion with this increased heightened awareness, which I find very questionable, if you will. To give you another instance as far as these grants and grant submissions, and the contradiction of as far as this grant goes, is March 4th, Mark was at a planning department meeting where the Assistant Planning Director made a presentation, about 10 minutes, I looked at it today, I timed it, for basically a $15,000 micro grant for bike racks. So the planning department presented, made a presentation with slides, et cetera, for a $15,000 grant, yet this one has never been disclosed in any of those meetings. I made that clear at the last meeting. You know, basically, again, it conflicts with submission of this grant. There's the issue about the 25% design is not concluded. There's still the alternate route that's not been disclosed, the treatment plant board. And then, I think what people don't realize is, 210 Turnpike Road, you think that business owner is going to give the town an easement for BWALT, since he got denied his special application? I find it hard to believe that is going to happen. So basically, this should have been discussed. And why aren't the questions asked, that now we find is $225,000 more, yet no one on the board or anywhere else is asked, why is it this more, much more expensive now? It feels that, it seems as a rogue agent, that seems that they're not accountable or being held accountable for this, for this submission. So basically, again, we're at the case that we're not being, this is not following the right protocol, and openness and transparency, and no collaboration communication. And I just want to close in, what I found kind of funny, is the annual town report, where if you look at ATSC, and I see they're in witness protection plan right now, but basically, it talks about this Mass Trails grant. You go to Planning Board, it talks about the submission of this application to Mass Trails. Select Board, there's no mention whatsoever as far as BWALT goes. And then when you look at the wastewater treatment plant board, they submitted in the annual town report their rebuttal of this project, and basically, they said, "The board finds that the proposed locations of the sections, basically, of the trail, in fact, interfere with the proper operation and maintenance of the treatment plant. Accordingly, the board requests that the BWALT find an alternative location for these sections of the proposed trail." Open disclosure on this, so hopefully you can follow through on this. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else here for open forum? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to next on the agenda, which is the Municipal Vulnerability Program Grant Letter of Support.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
No.
No? Do you want me to switch to this one? Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
So we have put together, or working on, an MVP grant application. MVP for, I'm sure all of you know, but for viewers at home, is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, for which Westboro has participated or became a participating community in 2019. Through that program, they have action grants available each year, and those can range from anything towards infrastructure-related, to planning-related documents, feasibility-type studies, as well as more societal-oriented, so helping the community to be better prepared for climate resiliency. In this particular case, we're looking at putting together a grant application for the Cedar Swamp Flood Mitigation and Resiliency Study. Just to give a little bit of background, again, I'm sure many of you are familiar with Cedar Swamp, and its designation as an area of a critical environmental concern, or an AC/EC. It was the first one designated in the state, which makes it pretty special. And it's where Rutter's Brook, Jack Strawbrook, and Piccadilly Brook all come together. It also serves as the headwaters for the Sudbury River. This area, I mean, Westboro in general, but this area in particular, have seen a lot of impacts as Westboro has grown over the last 50 to 75 years, which is when the last large-scale watershed analysis was done for this area. So with that dated information, it's really hard for us to look at ensuring when we do culvert replacement projects, or if we look at ways to resolve other flooding issues here in town, ensuring that the data we're modeling off of is not only going to help us now, currently, but also into the future, as we experience more intense rain events, and more frequent intense rain events. So what this study proposes to do is to take an in-depth analysis out of the entire wetlands complex, so everything that feeds into the Cedar Swamp area, including many of our commercial areas here in town, and some of our residential areas that have grown up. And then also looking at kind of the bathtub itself of Cedar Swamp, there's definitely an indication that over time, and is. There's definitely an indication that over time, and is fairly natural, that as these stormwater inputs have increased in this system, they bring sediment with them. That sediment has a tendency to build up over time in the areas where water flows the slowest, which would be Cedar Swamp. And so it kind of decreases the size of that bathtub over time. We also will be looking at the sizing of our culverts, and if there are specific ones that would really help us alleviate flooding issues by looking at sizing and other configurations. So this should dovetail nicely with some other projects we have in town. There was a culvert assessment done a few years back that prioritized replacements. Again, this should fit in really nicely with that. The idea is that this study will kind of give us a foundation for future infrastructure projects and being able to build a case maybe for future action grants that would look at infrastructure replacement. In terms of the grant itself, like many grant programs through the state, it's a reimbursement grant. So if the town is selected for this grant, then we would be looking at coming to fall town meeting with a warrant article for the full, full amount of the grant, and the town would be reimbursed. We're looking at a two-year timeframe, so it'd be fiscal year '26 and '27, that we would collect all this data and put together the report with recommendations. And then, in terms of the match for this grant, typically, a lot of the state grant programs require a 25% match, with some of the flooding that occurred in Lemonster and other areas over the last couple of years, maybe not last year because we were in a drought, but the year before, they actually decreased inland flooding projects to 10% instead of 25% for the match to make it more attainable for communities. So we'd be looking at roughly a $50,000 match, which can be both in-kind and cash match, and we would propose to have both. And that would be transparent in the warrant article. Questions for me?
Great. Thanks, Jennifer.
Sure.
Any questions from the board?
Sure.
Patrick?
Thank you, Jen. Really great to see this brought forward. I was a little surprised to see the 50 to 70 years since this was last done. So, you know, with the growth in the town, it certainly seems like it's long overdue. I guess, you know, one, one question is, I think maybe more towards Christie in regards to, can we leverage the Stormwater Enterprise Fund for, for this purpose, for the 10% match?
I'm hoping not the entire.
You gotta get really close.
No, it's not.
All right.
I don't think that we would be able to do it for the entire amount, and it also isn't part of the budget. So we won't, we'll have retained earnings next year. So there's potential that we, if we needed an article, that we would draw some of it from retained earnings. But I don't think that the project is exclusively, would be exclusively covered by that, though I guess that's worth the conversation with Chris.
Okay.
I speak to the in-kind part of it, is that, you know, we're really working through the, the budget to have as much of it be in-kind as possible. So staff time, putting together presentations, doing the public outreach sessions, especially when we collaborate across departments with, say, DPW, planning, those all make sense to collaborate with those groups for this project, so that we maximize our in-kind match as much as possible. But we'll have that fully broken down if we receive, if we're awarded the grant, and then we would have a better idea of that going into town meeting.
Yeah, you touched on, kind of my other thought around this was, obviously, this is a very vital and important, you know, resource in the community. It's a wonderful natural resource. You know, when people think of watershed and they think of stormwater, I think they think of them as being synonymous. And I think in my mind, they are synonymous. So that public outreach part is going to be really important as people better understand the work that's being proposed here. And I would also just certainly encourage and be very supportive of, you know, the inter-department, you know, conversations that need to happen and supportive work that needs to happen. So thank you very much for that, and I am very supportive of this grant. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Could you, yeah.
No, go ahead.
Could you explain what area of critical environmental concern is just high-level?
Sure. So through the state, the environmental EEA, so through the state office, they have designated certain areas to be of such critical environmental importance that they have additional special restrictions placed upon them. So the, because this was one of the first ones designated in the state, it speaks more to it being protected for water, protection of water supply and overall recreation enjoyment. It doesn't go into a lot of detail about necessarily like endangered or critical species there, or how unique white cedar swamp areas are. And I think that's become even, with development, become even more critical in the state. But being one of the first in the state, again, that was back in the 1970s.
Yeah.
So it was quite a while ago, and it really focuses on water supply protection.
Okay. I appreciate Patrick's question around the Stormwater Utility Fund. I think would be, I think if we can tap that for any portion of the cash component, I think that that would be, I think the public would feel good about that, if it's obviously aligned and allowed. So, no, I'm supportive of this. It makes sense. I think that there was some reference to potentially kind of flood, as this project moves forward, kind of flood zone, maybe re-identification of new areas. I think explaining what that means to the public as soon as, if this goes forward will be helpful, because I think residents and businesses can naturally get nervous to what that means to them from an insurance perspective.
Sure, sure. And it's not necessarily about changing flood mapping. It's ensuring that as we look at projection data moving forward, that we are, if, let's say we have a culvert replacement project slated through DPW, that we're projecting a size for replacement that makes sense for 25 or 50 years from now versus right now, so that we can be really smart with those infrastructure funds.
Yeah, no.
And place them in the right, allocate the funds to the most high priority ones based on that.
Right. And, and I, no, I certainly understand. I just think that even if that wouldn't be our intent to remap anything, if that could be a potential outcome, I think we just have to anticipate that, because it will be a question that comes up. That's all.
Sure.
Yep.
No, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? As I said, just to go over it again, so just from a timing perspective. So now you're asking for us to support this, and I think the chair to sign the letter. It goes through the process. We get the grant, then it, if we get the grant, then the thinking, the thinking is that we go to special town meeting, because we have to appropriate enough to pay for it upfront because it's reimbursement, but also to the points that we've had, figure out the match.
Right.
How that's going, how much is that going to be cash versus in-kind? Is that accurate in the?
Yes.
Timeframe of it?
Yeah, so that would all be spelled out in the warrant article. Yep.
Okay.
And so we would, schedule-wise, we should find out over the summer months, and then it would be, the timing would work out for it to be placed on the fall town meeting warrant.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
What, just as a follow-on, since this is a two-year project, what is the reimbursement cycle? And is it, we're reimbursed at the completion of that? So that would be two financial, I mean, two fiscal years, three maybe later? Am I, right?
So we would, just similar to, not to bring up other grant programs, but like, similar to Mass Trails, like some of our grants with that have been multi-year.
Yep.
And so it would be the, the same type of thing, where we would designate, they'll require us to submit what we expect to fund in fiscal year '26 and in fiscal year '27, so they can budget appropriately.
Okay, got it.
And then we would submit as we reach different milestones within the project.
Okay.
Funding will be ongoing, then?
Yeah, ongoing, got it.
If I can, Ian, I just want to ask, it's helped me, made me think of another question here. I guess, based on the current national political climate and the impacts, potential impacts that the current administration is talking about with the EPA and the downward trickle effect to state government and state funding, how do you feel about how sensitive this is timing-wise to get this now? I really appreciate you bringing this forward early in the cycle for, for fall town meeting. I just, do you have any sense of, of that potential impact?
Yeah, so I think, you know, hard to predict what's happening at the federal level and how that will trickle down to the state level. But right now, their funding is based off of previous year's allotments. And so I think, you know, they're, they're, have already set aside a pool of money for this year's grant round. And so they have an idea of what they have available overall. And knowing that this is a two-year grant cycle, they would have to set aside funds for both those fiscal years appropriately. I know that doesn't completely answer your question. I think there's, there's a lot out there that we're unsure about in terms of grant funding, but we still have to kind of move forward, like it's, it's going to still be budgeted. And I, I think before we exercise any contracts, we'll, we'll be far enough along in this first year of federal, navigating this new climate in the federal level.
Yeah.
That we'll have a sense of how that's going to play out and if it's going to impact any of the state grants.
Yeah. And my understanding is that the state's rainy day fund, no pun intended, is, is shrinking as a result of this right now. So it'd be interesting to see how this plays out. But again, I appreciate you bringing this forward early in our cycle.
Yeah, but I, I guess I would also advocate that because they already have some of this funding in hand, like it's already set aside and budgeted for, that now is a good time to be seeking those funds versus two years from now when there might not be as much available, to your point.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else, or is there a motion?
I move to authorize the Select Board Chair to sign the letter of support for the MVP action grant, Cedar Swamp Wetlands Complex Flood Mitigation and Resiliency Study.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is special permit application to zoning board of appeals for 20 Phillips Street. As we all know, it's the Metro West Regional Emergency Communications Center.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hear me okay? Great. My name's Anthony DeLucio. I'm with Colliers Project Leaders. We're the owners rep for the Metro West Regional Communication Center. With me tonight is Paolo Carasimi from Ted Galante Architectural Studios and Scott Bousier of Gale Associates. Thank you for allowing us to present this early package. The idea is to take 20 Phillips Street and turn that into a regional communication center. We are at the very early stage of what we consider schematic design, so there's a lot of drawing left to do. What we've uploaded to the system is what you see here tonight. I don't know if you want us to plug into a screen. We do have it on laptop.
That'd be great if you could.
Yes, because the public can see it as well.
Ah, excellent.
And I would just say if somebody could move that around to the side so we can all see it, that'd be very helpful as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just, they do, I don't know.
Hard copies on the screen, in your packets, right?
We like it.
Almost there.
We like it all.
There we go.
Thank you.
I like the pretty pictures, huh? The superintendent was in there when I went to school, when we went to school, though.
My grandfather went to high school there.
So while they're setting up?
Yep.
This is the same. We don't, we, we very rarely have, we give, give, this board give input to the zoning board of appeals, but this happens to be the primary authority. So this process is similar to, the process when you, when you, you just.
Right. So tonight it's really to ask questions, and then anything we have, we would be submitting to the zoning board of appeals.
Yes, as I said, early on, so we don't have drainage calculations, a lot of the final lighting, photometrics, those kind of things. We're looking for your early input on that. Paolo, as I said, represents Ted Galante Architectural Studios, so if there's elements of the building that you want to ask questions about, we have that ability tonight. Scott is on the civil engineering side, so the additional parking lot, setbacks, drainage, those types of issues that we are working through. We're here tonight to hopefully answer any questions, but certainly take your feedback, take your input, build that into the rest of the project. The project is, as I said, a Level 3 alteration, so that's an adaptive reuse of what was an old school to a regional communication center. Our plan is to have a full set of construction bid documents ready for this summer. So we've got four months of drawing, design, and engineering left to go. We'd like to be out to bid in July, August, start construction in September. We think right now it's a 12 to 14-month construction schedule. So that puts us in, in an area that hopefully this group and planning board and ZBA can work with. We're falling under the International Existing Building Code because it is an existing building, as amended by Mass General Law for our building codes under CMR. With that, architecture up first. You want to talk through?
Yep.
Elevator addition, building modifications, and then we'll go to site.
Before we do that, could, I don't know if it would be appropriate for town manager or for you gentlemen, just for the public, there are some people that are pricing this thing, what are they talking about? I know you live it every day. Can we give some context for the public? And I know we're all very familiar.
Yeah. So a couple of years ago, Chief Purcell and I came before you and asked that we be permitted to pursue a feasibility study with other communities to explore the potential for a regional emergency communication center, where we would continue to offer dispatch services in a regional environment. So we did pursue that feasibility study with several other communities, the communities that we worked with at the time. We're not interested in moving forward, so we actually expanded our reach and I think have a feasibility study that actually includes maybe seven or nine other communities. Ultimately, when we were ready to put together an intermunicipal agreement or an IMA, the only other community that was going to be moving forward with us was the town of Grafton. So we have been working with the town of Grafton to stand up its own district, so the regional, the Metro West Regional Emergency Communication Center district. And that's, that's an important nuance because it actually functions as its own entity, almost like its own town. So we, so we initially, so we worked together with the town of Grafton under the structure established by the intermunicipal agreement, which was signed by both boards, both select boards, to create a board of directors, which are the town managers in both communities, an operations committee, which are the police and fire chiefs in both communities, and a finance subcommittee, which is finance directors in both communities. So we hired Colliers to come on as our owners' project manager. As part of the IMA too, really important why we're talking about the Harvey Building, is because the board, though we originally were looking at the Hakamakapond Building, ultimately committed this property, which the town of Westboro will retain ownership of, to be renovated into the emergency communication center. So, so Grafton and Westboro went out to bid for an OPM, and that's when we hired Colliers. And then Colliers worked with us to hire our architect, which is T-Gas. And then the town of Southborough became interested and sent a letter of interest to, to the board, which we brought back because, to both select boards, Grafton and Westboro, to allow Southborough to join us in this intermunicipal agreement. So now we have the three communities, and we meet weekly. We meet, our meetings are public. We're, we're subject to open meeting law as a public body, and we have been working on, on this. We did have a meeting in December where we invited the public to come and get an update. We're going to have another meeting after the zoning board of, zoning board of appeals meeting, just like a more broad public update. Not related to the building project, but probably the most significant thing that we've moved forward recently is the process to hire an executive director. So this executive director, this board approved, adding that to a staff position in the town of Westboro, only if the, the grant that we receive from the state fully covers that salary, which it does. So on April 15th, we'll be holding finalist interviews in this room to select an executive director. Probably the most important thing that I haven't said yet, which is that it's fully grant-funded, so fully grant-funded by the haven't said yet, which is that it's fully grant funded. So fully grant funded by the state. And so all of the, all of the expenses associated with the design has, have been fully covered by the state. And Chief Purcell has just submitted on behalf of the district a grant to, for, for the next sort of, the next step, level of funding in order for us to move forward, as Tony just said, with construction, hopefully this fall.
Yeah, thank you. And I think just the other piece for the public's benefit, this isn't just something we sort of dreamed up that we should do. This is part of a whole regionalization effort that the state is undertaking for dispatch services. So. Thanks.
Perfect. Thanks. Okay.
Good evening. So we're looking here at some rendered elevation of the building. So this is the north elevation, which is the, the front of the building from Phillips Street. You see, the renovation is mostly interior, of course, being, this being used for many years as a school, and now going, is going to be a communication center. So the interior needs to be completely redone. The layout is different, of course. We need different room, different equipment. So on the exterior, there's not a lot going on. One important piece of the expansion, let's call it like that, of the building is the elevator tower that, that, that you can see from this view. And of course, accessibility is, is its main, it's, it's the main important piece of such a building. So we want it to be accessible. The front, being, being a building that is going to be used only by the dispatchers, you need all the entrances to be accessible, but it needs one. So the front, we, we thought about it, but the front, to make the front accessible, we wouldn't need like big ramps coming out from the side and would like basically destroy the beautiful elevation that we have on Phillips Street. So we thought about that corner, which is the, the most like hidden behind the building for an elevation tower with, with the vestibule. So you get into that little vestibule that it's, that it's back here. And then from the vestibule, you access the elevator and you can go either in the basement or at the raised level because the first floor it's raised, or you can go up on the attic. The attic, which also will have some equipment, and it might be, there is a space that, that it's considered for like future, future use. It's not going to be worked on right now. It's that front piece you see, that like some nice dormer. So there's daylight coming into the, into that area. So in the future, it could be, it could be used in a nice way. So we need accessibility to that attic floor as well. So these are just a few views. Scott was going through a few of the views around the building. And again, the main thing, this is from the side, this is from the back. So you see the tower on the, on the right-hand side, the elevator tower and the vestibule. And then went forward, this is, this is the, this is the side on the current parking lot. So here is where you see actually the entrance of the vestibule to the elevator tower.
Now, do you want questions as we go? Do you want them at the end? Or how, what's best?
Mask.
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Okay. I did have a question, but.
Go.
Where that elevation tower is, that's kind of the worst part of, I guess, when I look at that property because of the slope in that parking lots, I'm just curious as to, how that's being handled with that being the accessible entrance?
So what we're planning on doing is raising the grade of that area, raising the grade of that parking lot so that we can meet current CMR and ADA standards. It will require a retaining wall to meet that challenge. On the top of that retaining wall, we will be putting in a stockade fence, because we do realize that's going to raise the elevation of cars and headlights that may be shining into a butters. And we want to make sure we prevent that from happening. So stockade fence will mitigate that, a butter impact from vehicles at night coming and going from the site.
Okay. Thank you.
And maintaining the historic integrity of the building itself, that became the least disruptive, least impactful of the building architecture.
Yeah. So the, the elevator tower is completely clad in, it's a full brick veneer, and there is some recess, and you can see that it kind of like mimic the recess that it's around the window of the building. So we're trying to integrate. We had, we thought about a few options before, but then also talking with the historic commission, we all agreed that the best way to do it would be to have, to work with bricks and integrate this piece with the architecture of the, of the building.
I just wanted to add, because Paolo just brought up the historic commission. So the work on this project does not require any specific permitting by the historic commission, but we have been, including the chair of the historic commission in our conversation. Paolo has specifically talked to Christian Hedrick, and, and they also have asked to, to access the property prior to doing any work, so that they can take photos. So, so they are, you know, working, we are working with them even though there's no specific requirement to do so.
Thank you for that.
And just while we're on this view, then the, where you see the elevator in that little white area, so that's, that was a little confusing in the other view. So that's where, if someone needs to access, will that be the main entrance for all employees? Or will it be up the stairs as well as that, for someone that needs assistance?
That, that's, that's the accessible. We call it the accessible entrance. So there's going to be parking on this side of the building, but there's going to be also parking on the other side of the building, as the site planned.
We think that will be the primary staff entrance.
Okay.
On the other side of the building?
On the elevator side.
On the elevator side, okay. Near those stairs. Okay, okay. All right. And that, that vestibule, then someone that needs the elevator, it's ground level, they're accessing, and then they're going up or down? Okay, thanks. Yep.
So if I can ask a question about the vestibule as well, if you go back to that exterior view? So my understanding is certainly limited, but is that vestibule going to have a companion stairwell down to the first floor with the elevator? My understanding is you have to have, the elevator and the stairs have to have the same egress out of the building, a common egress. And I see that the current design right there still has the original exterior exit entrance on the, on the right there.
Yes.
But that vestibule seems a little small in this rendering to handle both. So I'm just curious, how's that going to play out? Or is that under consideration to?
Well, the interior stair of the building.
You want to go to the floor plan?
Yeah. Yep. Okay, so this is basement.
Do you want the furniture?
First one. Yeah, the other one, yes.
The stairway is right there.
Yeah.
This one.
Yep.
Okay, so, so the, there is the vestibule that it's just for the elevator, as you can see, yeah, in that corner. And then there is the, when you come out of the elevator, there is another vestibule, because of course, the dispatch area, the admin, you need to be, they're all secured, and they're all like access controlled. So, so that's a second secure vestibule. And then from there, there is the stair going out, the egress going out, which is directly related to the stair also coming up, coming down from the attic. So if you come down from the attic, you have access directly through the egress on the side.
Okay, so it's okay to have two separate egresses, one for the elevator, one for the, the stairs? Okay, that, that's what I was curious. Thank you.
Okay. Scott, you're up.
I'm going to go quickly. I don't know if we want to talk about plan quickly or?
By the way, while you're bringing up the other, I'll just say that I like the exterior design. I like the fact that you were able to combine the exterior elements with the new elements of the property. So I think that's fantastic.
Thank you. So just quickly go through the plan. This is the raised floor, the first floor. So the, the, the front elevation, the front stair, of course, here with the, with a couple of handrails, getting into, this is a, this is going to be a secure vestibule. So people can access the first door, but they, they cannot access the second. They need to be buzzed in. And it's going to be also, there's going to be a, a level five, a level five, we'd say bulletproof glass. So nobody is going to be able to shoot through this vestibule, both walls and glazing to enter. It's going to be, it's going to be ballistic, ballistic level five. As soon as you get into the building, on the right-hand side, there is a training room for 30 people. So the dispatchers, they go through several training, so they can access directly that training room. While on the left-hand side, there's the admin area. There are offices for the director, for the admin, and there is also an extra, an additional office over here. Couple of restroom, and then we enter into the main piece of the building, which is the dispatch area. There are currently, we're showing 13 desk plus one supervisor. I don't know if initially, I don't think we're going to use them all, depending on, on the, on the number of the, of the dispatchers required.
Yeah. So, so there is room in the building for additional communities to come in, and which would likely require additional dispatchers. And one of the responsibilities of the new executive director will be to reach out to other communities to, to invite them into the district.
So right off that dispatch room, there is a room for supervisors, and then there is a little break room that leads to the other side egress, and also it's connected, it's directly connected with the training, with the training room. From the dispatch, we can access the stair going up, going down. Actually, this is going down, this way is going down to the basement. And then this is the stair, as we said before, going up into the attic. Basement is basically just, there is a lot of equipment. There is, there is a IT room, of course, being this a dispatch. There is a big IT room. There's going to be racks and all kind of like equipment in there. And then we have a couple of, we have a room that's, that it's a locker room and, and restrooms for the dispatchers. Basically, they come in, they go downstairs, they, each, each of them have their own locker. They can get changed. There are restroom with showers. They can do the same at the end of the shift. You know, it's a tough job. They go through some like tough calls. And so at the end of their shift, if they need to refresh, take a shower, just change and, and go away. Everything, everything is located at the basement.
If I can ask some questions here?
Yeah.
So I'll just start off with, so if I'm understanding correctly, the anticipation or expectation is that the public will enter the building from that front entrance, central entry area. Will the entire building have ballistic glass on it as well?
The windows, we'll be talking about doing all the windows, yes. All the windows.
Okay.
Ballistic level five.
The brick of old buildings, which is multiple, what we call wife of brick, gives it its own ballistic rating.
Yeah, it's woven.
It's not really a level five in a UL listing.
Yeah.
As it is, but it does add that ballistic.
Right. So the weakest point is going to be the windows. That's why I was wondering if, if those were under consideration. My next question is about the, if I heard you correctly, the IT spaces for networking equipment, server equipment, et cetera, is going to be in the cellar?
Yes.
So that'll provide some very interesting challenges with humidity, cooling, and heating. Have those been, have those been reviewed? And if not, I would, I don't know who is appropriate. I mean, we have our own IT experts in our town, but you know, is that, is that something that you all are reviewing and?
So, yes.
We are currently working as part of our project team. We have LB Communications. They've done a number of state 911 similar facilities around the state. So they're really working with all of the three towns on all of the technology migration, integration, new equipment. As part of the Ted Galante Studios, they have mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers as part of their team. And we are holding those meetings concurrently to work through all of the heating load, electrical load, dehumidification, and all of those concerns.
Okay. And as part of that, one of the things that I would expect that's being under consideration is how the utilities are being brought to this building in regards to trenching or underground to bring to the building for redundancy purposes, et cetera. Is that also being discussed as?
Yes. I think as, as Scott gets into more of the site, you'll see where the generator is placed. We are currently working with the utility provider to figure out what the best location is. We, we kind of know where we want our generator and our transformer to go. You'll see those on the plan. We've got to move some utility poles for the curb cuts and entrances that are, that are planned right now. So we are having those discussions very early on.
Yeah, it also just suggests, if you haven't had conversations with, for example, the network providers for redundancy purposes, coming down opposite ends of the street is a good way to do that.
Yep.
So just something to consider as well.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, anything, again, this, we'll be giving comments to the ZBA if there's any comments you want versus comments directly to them.
Yeah.
Right.
Good point.
So in front of you is the current posed site layout for the facility. As you may all be aware, the site is currently on a .36 acre site. On the left-hand side of the plan, there is existing parking lot. Like I said before, we plan on rebuilding that, doing improvements to that, raising this corner, the far back corner up to be level so that we can meet handicap accessibility requirements, putting in a retaining wall and putting in a stockade fence so that we are protecting and mitigating any impact to this left-hand side butter. In addition to the left side, we also are including additional parking on the right-hand side. Many of you are aware that Phillips Street allows on-street parking. However, we understand, and the department understands that during training sessions, having all those vehicles on-street could be a nuisance. And in effort to mitigate that, additional parking has been included on both sides, flanking the existing facility. While the facility's goal is trying to achieve 30 parking spaces, 27 spaces were accomplished. Two of those 27 spaces are EV charging stations. Two of those spaces are ADA accessible parking spaces. Because of the layout of the existing left-hand site, the remaining five in the back are going to be considered, I'm using air quotes, compact. So any full-size truck may have some difficulty because of the narrowing of the access aisle and the narrowing of the parking space itself. But in effort to try and accommodate and meet town design standards, the front parking space and all of the right-hand parking spaces, both access aisle and parking stalls with length are meeting or proposed to meet current design standards. As previously noted, we do have a ZBA special permit application that has been filed. No further design on this site has been prepared. Our goal is trying to receive ZBA comment, public concerns, and figure out where that may take this layout. And then once we receive those comments, and if everyone accepts this layout, then we'll proceed on with working with the town departments on stormwater, lighting, landscaping, and all those other features. Last thing we want to do is design all that, and then have to go back to drawing. Change it. Yep. Makes sense.
Yeah, just so, a couple of comments, and you don't have to answer them. These are really to the ZBA. So you're adding a significant amount of impervious service. I understand that. You know, it's a balance between not having everyone on-street parking while achieving that on the site. My question is, will you be required to create an in-ground filtration system to kind of capture water? I would imagine adding this would be required. So that would be one of my questions. Rather than pushing all that water out to the street, I would just be concerned with the raising of that back corner and any, you know, impact to kind of the neighbors. So making sure that that is satisfied from a design standpoint. Where the generator is and the dumpster, I'm, I, I think you said, and I'm just looking at here, I've got stone masonry retaining wall on the right side. I would imagine the pad and the dumpster will have, it looks like an enclosure. So is there any fencing? My question is, on the right side, is there any fencing at this time proposed?
Right. Around the generator?
No, no. Just, so first question is on the right-hand, oh, sorry, other side. Sorry, my, my right here. Yeah. Is there fencing along that property line?
Not currently.
Not currently. And that's not proposed. But, but I do see where you have a vinyl-clad enclosure for the dumpster. Okay. So my only other question around kind of the generator is, to the extent that it's possible, because I know you don't want a lot of foliage around a generator. possible, because I know you don't want a lot of foliage around a generator, but if there is anything to buffer noise for neighbors, that would be something, as a neighbor, I would wanna understand, that looks like a pretty large generator, so I would imagine when that thing fires up, it's gonna have some significant noise, understanding kinda that noise volume for those neighbors and then buffering.
I can offer you, as we met earlier today, the chief Purcell did bring up, he's been in contact with the neighbors, that is an area of concern, and we are gonna look at fencing around that so the neighbors don't see it, it will also help muffle the sound of it. The generator will be specified with a sound attenuating cabinet around it, so we will try to minimize both the visual and noise impacts as much as possible.
Okay, yep, understood. And I do know that just where the parking is, there are some trees that are going to have to come down, and I understand that the health of those trees may not be great anyway, even though people see them and they think there's a beautiful canopy. There are a couple little trees here in the front that looks like you're gonna plant, can you talk about kind of, or, that would be a question, I'm not sure. I know you don't have all those things worked out, you just told us.
Yeah, again.
So the question back to, yes, the question back to the ZBA would just be making sure that, that the plan includes, you know, some green beautification, I guess is the right way to say it. And, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I don't wanna cut you off, but I did have a question, though, if you don't mind, just around the timing, so we're, maybe I'm looking, Christie, to you here, so this is coming for us now for comments, it's going to ZBA. Does it come back to us again when some of these other, the lighting, the landscaping, any of that stuff happens, or?
I don't think so, no.
No.
This is the, yeah, I mean, this is the, just the process, so this is your sort of opportunity, and then, that being said, I mean, in terms of the permitting, it doesn't have, you don't have another sort of bite of the apple, I guess, but I think, you know, we can certainly provide some more updates as we go along, considering it's a town building.
Yeah, I was just thinking, typically with site plan, we would have those pieces in it, in terms of landscaping, lighting, et cetera, because this is phased out, it's not there.
This project, while it is a ZBA special permit, is my understanding, and the town can speak better to it than I am, but it will be going through the same planning board review process, maybe not through a planning board, site plan application, we've been able to combine that process.
It's not going to the planning board, it is only going to the zoning board. I don't know if you wanna have Fred come up and speak to the process.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Which zoning are we doing this under, the zoning we just passed? Like, when is this application going in?
It's going in April.
Okay.
So we've already applied.
So the ninety-day Attorney General review on the zoning we just passed is not gonna be done, so this is presumably.
This is permitted under the current zoning.
Under the current zoning that requires M1, buildings in M1 districts to go to town meeting.
It doesn't require, this is, this is, we can, we can go to zoning board under the current zoning for this, so Fred, I don't know if you wanna speak to that.
Cause, I'm completely befuddled by that, yeah.
Fred Lennaro, Community Development Director, used to be the building commissioner, so I looked at zoning, but, so there's a caveat on the, in the directions of our zoning bylaw, because the existing facility is non-conforming to begin with, there's a carve-out that they can go to the ZBA for a special permit. Because the special permit is being heard by the ZBA, they also can review the site plan, because we send both, instead of sending it to two different boards, both processes can be done through one board. We've only, since we instituted predominantly site plans going to planning board in 2019, we've only done this like one other time, so it's, it's very unusual that the ZBA is actually the site plan review board, but they can be, and in this case, they are. So the planning director will ask, or can ask, the planning board for comments, but there's no formal hearing in front of the planning board because the ZBA is also the site plan reviewing committee.
Okay.
As the select board could be, it just hasn't come up.
Yep.
If that, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I'm still confused by that, Fred, because when you look at the old zoning, the current zoning, I should say, the, under use regulations, there's a clause D that says, "Building in municipal districts, the site plan review process as defined in section three."
Can you, Mark, can you speak?
Sorry. Building in municipal districts, the site plan review process as defined in section three shall apply to any municipal buildings or structures located in the M or M1 districts. Dimensional regulations for municipal or institutional buildings or structures on land zone M1 shall not be established for each building or structure, I'm sorry, shall be established for each building or structure by two-thirds vote of the town meeting. So you're saying, because this isn't a new building?
Well, there's actually another, there's another section of the bylaw that references a special permit for a non-conforming structure or those in M1. In this case, it is both an M1 zone and it's a non-conforming structure, it doesn't meet the current setbacks. So it's an existing building, doesn't meet the current setbacks, under that other carve-out, we believe it to fit the requirement of only requiring a special permit through the ZBA, wouldn't have to go to town meeting.
I'm fine with that, I like the building, I like the project, I just wanna make sure that I understand, because the new zoning sets a five-foot rear yard, and you're encroaching on that.
In your.
So if it's the old zoning, and you're confident that we can go forward with ZBA approval, I'm fine with that.
Yes, we're confident of that, it fits that scenario of the carve-out for that, it would, it also goes in keeping with the new bylaw, so it marries with both. We've, we've had offline or other conversations with the chair of the ZBA, and he's in agreement with that, too.
Well, the new bylaw has a five-foot rear yard, and you're going to one foot, so you would need a variance under the new bylaw.
You're not going to one foot, Mark, I'm sorry, it's actually at one foot now, it already has that offset. The present building is, as I understood the print, the present building is at one foot.
Well, it's not just the present building, though, it's the impervious surfaces, right, and the generator?
No, it, it's the building itself that already encroaches the setback, the present building.
So only the present building, let me look at that.
As far as I know. They can answer that better than I.
Well, no, it, what you're saying is, is you're coming in before the new zoning anyway.
Right.
Okay, then I don't need to worry about the five-yard setback. Five-foot setback.
Okay.
So, I guess, I just wanna clarify, so this is our one and only opportunity to ask questions, so I.
And to submit any comments to the ZBA.
In terms of permitting, that doesn't mean that we won't come back to provide updates.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate Mark's clarification on those points around the zoning. I don't know if Shelby was done, so I.
Yeah, no, so vegetation, kinda beautification of the area, it, I, I'm not sure where that will be, but I'm hoping it will be ample to make sure that this kind of looks like it still fits. Architecturally, of course, it does, cause it's been there, but just from a greenscape, I noticed that the two EV charging stations are there on my right, your left. That, that makes sense that they're together, of course, I'm just wondering if there's any sort of sensitivity or issue to the fact that if you need accessibility, they're at a great distance to those accessible spots, so that would be an area of concern that those individuals, you know, and I don't know to what extent of the cost, if there's one, you know, if there could be a third over in that area, that might, that would be potentially a suggestion. And then, I guess, there's a proposed new curb cut on that right-hand side. I know curb cuts are always a sensitive subject, I guess that that's gonna be allowed, I just, you know, making sure that it's properly designed and permitted and, you know, that the sidewalk, that's the other thing, that sidewalk is in pretty rough shape there, will that sidewalk be improved as part of this project in the front portion of the building? You're already making two pretty generous cuts there and improving that, it looks like there's not a whole lot more to be done space-wise to at least improve that sidewalk, so I would like to see that. I think that that's it.
Number one, and then, yep.
Sure, so a couple, I guess, my biggest question, I'm a little torn on that position of the generator, and I guess I'll just first ask a question so I can be enlightened here, and the fire chief's here, so he might be the best one to answer this question. I would imagine that there's a requirement on how often you have to fire that generator? How often is that?
Once a week for an hour.
Once a week for an hour, and it's gonna be in a sound-reducing shroud, so to speak, with the exterior canopy or whatever it's called around it. I'm torn in its position because I look at where it's at and I say, you know, that's, that's the closest proximity to the residence, right? Three different homes are right there, and I look at the other side of the parking lot, on the other side, and I say, you know, the Y has its air conditioning unit, is that small square up there on that side, so it's got its utilities there, and I'm not sure how loud an air conditioning unit is, but I'm just questioning, why wouldn't we put it over on that side versus the side that it's currently proposed for? Just because getting it away from the residences, getting the smell of, the sound and the smell away from the residences when it fires once a week, so.
So the answer is, sorry, can you hear me? Patrick Purcell, you're fire chief, so the answer is, where the generator is now, look the, like my, my left of that, you see the square that's there?
Yep.
That is a, that's the transformer for the building, so you can see that pulling the very expensive cable would go from the transformer to there versus the other location we had evaluated was in the opposite far corner of the property, so that was cost prohibitive. To go back to the side that we're on now, I met with the neighbor this week, so behind where the generator's going, on the property line, there is a retaining wall that looks like it was buried about a hundred years ago, so I brought forward at the regional dispatch meeting today, if we could just get that area cleaned up in a similar fashion to appease the butter on the left side of the property, a section of fence, like a white vinyl, on top of the retaining wall, and then we have a fence that goes around, it's just like the fire station, few doors down, with the cabinetry that has acoustic, takes the acoustic sense of sensitivity, and we actually even threw out, if he owns the buildings on the corner there, what time is good to run it? And he's like, I can do that, and I'm like, if it works for the project, and it works for you, then we'll make it happen, so that corner is actually not a problem, and he was looking forward to getting that corner cleaned up, frankly.
Okay.
So, money, getting the corner cleaned up, and really just including the neighbors in the decision over there, it seemed to, seemed to work for us.
I really appreciate you reaching out to the butters and having those conversations. My next question, and I, Shelby asked this earlier, I don't know if I heard the answer, on that right-hand side fence near the generator, all the way down that property line to the front of the property, I believe there's a wall that's being planned there, but similar to the left side, is there a fence to prevent lights from the parking lot going into that neighbor's house as well?
I think there's an existing wall there.
Is it high enough? I'm just, I get it on the side, you know, the left-hand side, we're raising that parking lot, and I'm just curious, is to the, on that right-hand side.
So that's more of a request than, rather than asking them.
Yeah, I was just curious if there is, I don't know if there is, and if there isn't, I would say that's something the ZBA should consider.
Yep.
Currently, there is an old stone, stone wall, similar to, fire chief explained, for this rear butter that is along here. As far as answering your question, is how high it is and will it impact, we have not looked at that, we do not know.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends on the height of the vehicle, I don't know.
Well, you got a picture there.
Well, I mean, if you see, it's probably.
So I would just add that to our list.
That's a good, just a question for the ZBA.
But, you know, trucks would probably.
Yeah, no.
That truck would probably be too high.
Also, just to get back to the generator, to make, a sound analysis has been done, and basically within this area, it is anticipated that the sound is gonna be about the same decibel as a normal conversation.
Or a car starting, I mean, it's, I've had these installed before, so I understand on the, on the commercial size, like this one is spec'd, so it does kick out some noise, but it's, it's kinda like, probably like my truck, Mark.
But it also has a barrier that most residential generators don't have.
It has a double barrier with the fence around it, too, so that's, that's great.
And you have a playground right behind the building, too. It's probably louder.
Exactly, exactly. I would just say, I'm also very appreciative of the fact that the parking lot's being enlarged, because I think that'll pull parking off the street, which I think is good for the neighborhood. I would just encourage the ZBA to ensure that the parking lighting is downlighting for the residences, we don't want those shining into their second or third floor bedrooms. And then, to just dovetail onto Shelby's question around EV stations on the other side, I would actually encourage, I don't know if there are ADA, you know, handicap individuals that drive EVs, but I would suggest we make that capability as well, so that's something the ZBA.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
You said handicap, I didn't know.
Yeah.
She said way accessible.
Yeah, I'm just saying, to me, there should be at least one over in that area, or specifically for one, again, I don't know what the code is, but there should be some balance there.
Yep, and then my final question was to Christie, I didn't, I don't, that April 15th meeting you said for finalists, is that an open meeting? It is, okay, thank you. Thank you very much for presenting this.
I look, yeah, Mark.
Yeah, I was just wondering where snow storage is gonna be?
Yeah, no.
Great question, haven't looked at it yet.
Yeah. It's a good question.
In Chief Purcell's parking spot. Yeah, I just don't see a lot of room there.
Yeah.
You know, I'm glad you're taking down the old flagpole that pretty rusted out.
And those two trees are dying.
Yes.
But I just don't see where that's gonna go, and if it's gonna need to be removed and from the site, how that's gonna be dealt with.
Hmm.
I do think there is provision and zoning on the lighting, it has to be down.
Have to be down.
It can only be a maximum height, I assume ZBA will, you discussed that already with.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to call photo metrics.
Yeah, I think the stormwater, the question on stormwater has to go through that as well, in terms of what the stormwater treatment will be in, et cetera. Any other questions? Sean?
Yeah, good question, so we've got three towns.
Sean, can you move the, sorry, were you sharing the microphone, sorry?
Yeah, no, no, yeah. There's, so there's three towns currently in here, and this question may not be for you guys, the three towns that are going to occupy this, sort of what percentage of capacity are they utilizing of this building? Sort of how many addition, in every town's different, sort of how much more capacity is there, and then above and beyond that, there is a second floor which can be expanded, so what's the maximum capacity of this building? Thank you, thank you, chief.
So the answer is relative to whatever community that is, so in theory, we could do eight to twelve communities, probably of similar size to us, but it's really up to, if the next tire kicker that decided they wanted to opt-in was, and this is, this is totally fictional, the city of Worcester, we'd be done.
Right.
Because that would take up the rest of the building, so in reality, you know, you have different sized communities, Marlborough, probably take up half of it, but we could take, you know, Milbury, Sutton, like smaller, a bunch of those, so it really is dependent on, it's really dependent on the 911 volume, call volume in those communities.
Got you, so is that upon the completion of this project, or would that be, you know, in the future, we would have to do work in the second floor in order to go beyond six or seven, or?
So, no, that's based on the number of dispatch consoles that you saw.
See currently.
On the floor plan. The third floor additional space where those dormers are would, would never be fit out as true dispatch space.
Gotcha.
It could become additional office space, lockers, administrative space, but the fill-out of the thirteen-position dispatch space is what you would be adding on to.
Got it, thank you. To that point, would there ever be a chance to expand out to, if we needed to, could you expand out to the training room?
Not, probably not, to be honest, and we'd be moving. So you better understand this, so this is a console, one, two, three, four, and so on, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and supervised at thirteen.
Yep.
So each console itself is about, you can correct me if I'm wrong, about between a hundred and a hundred fifty square feet, which is industry standard, so in, in reality, as we move forward and we start to build up a communication plan and an operational plan, we're gonna, you know, see, maybe after midnight, we don't need as many dispatches as during the day, and we can streamline down those services, so hypothetically, between the three communities, if there's four, six. So hypothetically, between the three communities, if there's four, six, eight police cars on at nighttime, but during the daytime, there's 20, you know, like, we would need, you know, more consoles occupied. So you kind of see how that would flex up and down. So if like a Worcester came in, they would, they would take up 50% of the room like that. But that's really, really how that works. So supervisor over here, that's your surge protection. And then the rest are divided up between police console, and depending on the communities and how we split those plans up, is really, really how the room works. To take this away, probably would be problematic, because they need the train. And how else would you get your staff in there? There's probably the most we would ever see working out of this build, out of this building would be about 30 employees, which is why we designed up a 30, which fit beautifully. Okay. Taking that away would, you can't really take away that, that opportunity. We could go to 12 stories on Phillip Street.
No, thank you.
Sean, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Mark, will you think of that, Mark?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so it looks like you filed for an application for design review. And listed here, it says owner of record town of Westboro School Department, is that a typo? Because it's, we don't need school department approval for this, right? Or school committee, okay, making sure.
Good point.
I don't want somebody on the school committee squawking because we...
I think they were the last town user of the property, they used the superintendent.
We actually did some pretty extensive research, to, very extensive research, to identify sort of the path of ownership of the building. And then got town council's opinion that we were cleared to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, so my, just comment again, ZBA or design review, someone will, I'm sure, weigh in on this, but just signage that's appropriate, right? Because I can see, because this is in a neighborhood, because this is a 24 by 7 operation, you know, making it clear that there's no residential parking, that it's a private, or whatever, whatever that language is, but that those spots are not available, I'm assuming, for public use. That they are for use, you know, of the rec. And enforcement could follow, like, I guess, I just, I think we just need to be clear about that, because particularly, when you get into the winter months in downtown, and, you know, we grow, that just needs to be clear.
Can I ask one final question, it's unrelated to this, I'm actually looking at the chief here, but it goes back to the, I think, the question Patrick hit earlier about the entrance and the ballistics. But my understanding here is that this is not, typically, it's not a public-facing building. I mean, this is a communications center, but I think about when we did the tour of the one in Foxborough, which no one could find, and I missed the entrance, when I went to try to find it. But if you could just highlight that, I think, for the public as well, as to kind of what this is, and probably more importantly, what it isn't in terms of the public. So I remember at the beginning of this project, there was a concern about fencing in the property and making it look abnormal, and what Christie and I and the other members of the committee have learned going forward, is people actually want fence, the abutters, they actually want a fence. So we've been kind of working to, working to the plans to accommodate people, because we want, we want to be good neighbors. Moving forward, this is the, I, well, personal note, I find it a fascinating project to be renovating a building that's greater than 100 years old, maintaining the architecture, the history, at the same time, hardening it to current-day standards and putting in all kinds of technology to suit today's standards and leaving room to build that technology out going forward. So taking, your question for security is, we don't need to barbed wire this facility, but we do need to harden the facility, whether that's through access control and security cameras and bullet-resistant glass on the entire, the entire first floor to protect the communication center and the employees that work there. Those things will happen, they shouldn't be visible to the eye from the street. And it's always been our intention, and the managers pushed us from day one, you know, we want this to fit into the community, and we don't like, want it to look abnormal. And it's our belief that this is going to look like a brand-new building that was built, like, the way it was built when it first came to fruition in the 1800s, except now it has an elevator. But I think, just my final question is, from a kind of public-facing and that vestibule and saying, you know, it's an entryway, you know, and then secure beyond that, this isn't, these types of buildings aren't intended that they're regularly public-facing, people coming in and out. No, no, no.
This isn't a meeting room for the public.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to get to, this is... No, this is a secure facility for the employees to field 911 calls, maintain radio integrity, protect the first responders, and get the citizens the help they need. It's not a public building, it is not used for public training. Very, very little public visitation would probably go on in this building. People come to the police department or the fire department for public reports all the time. That is not in this facility, and it would not happen there. Really, we're just trying to keep that building... Perfect, I wanted to bring that up from a public standpoint, because some people think, oh, that's replacing, if I need to go to the police station, now I'm going to go here. No, that's not, I just want to make sure it's very clear that this is distinct, different role, et cetera, even though it is downtown.
One of the things I would just mention, Ian, as I was looking at the diagrams at home the other day, I really found it fantastic that the architect, that you guys have actually drawn in there. For example, cleaning the brick, you know, getting this building looking beautiful. And I think that's fantastic, I really appreciate the design, and I really look forward to seeing this project move forward.
Yeah, that was like one of the first thing when we looked at the building. I mean, we saw like this beautiful building. And as I said before, we thought about other options, of course, we're architects, we like to kind of like go and find different ways to solve the issues. But we agreed with the team and with the story commission that matching the architecture of the building was the best, the best way to integrate that new volume, and then cleaning up and bringing the building to its original look, it would be beautiful, it would be a must.
Great, one more question.
I'm sorry, is there any bike storage? Like, do you envision any of your, of the employees wanting to bike there?
Not right now.
It's 20... I mean, just a bike rack or something somewhere, yeah.
That's a good idea.
20, 20 fire department guys, they're pretty athletic, I would think, maybe some of them. I mean, I don't want to bike anywhere, but...
Okay, anything else?
No, thank you, this is very helpful.
Appreciate your time, thank you, it's, yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
CeeLo, Christie, you guys got all the comments here, perfect. Thank you. I do think, I know this, why I asked the question, we'll come back, but just keeping us informed, I think will be, will be great. Okay, next on the agenda is a request to submit a letter of support related to the implementation and enforcement of the energy code.
Well, while they're coming up, I just wanted to note, I got an updated letter yesterday, which I've just forwarded to you all, I missed it yesterday. So in your packet, you have a letter, there were a few tweaks to it. I'm sure they can point that out as they talk about it.
Great. Thank you. Fred, are you introducing it, or?
Hi, Fred Leonardo, Community Development Director. So in the past several months, year or so, one of the federations, committees that belong to Mass Federation of Building Officials, we've been talking to two different organizations, both the Building Board of Regulations and Standards, and the Department of Energy Resources, to try to kind of state where we think the issues may be relative to the more recently adopted energy codes. So that's the basis of where Sustainable Westboro has also been in support of this movement, if you will, to see if we can kind of address those issues. So that's the basis of what Sustainable Westboro is, I think, is asking you for support tonight.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, let me provide a little more depth of context, so...
Actually, just, we know you, but just so the public...
Pete on back, Eight Face Side Road.
Yep.
Is this working?
Yeah, just lead forward to it, yep.
The energy code changed January 1st, 2023, so two years ago. And in that change, there's a pretty dramatic change in the stretch energy code, which impacts Westboro today. And in that process, that came out of a 2021 climate bill. And they changed the responsibility for development of the energy code and changed agencies from DOL to DOER. And it seemed in the process, they kind of broke some of the support systems that DOL had previously provided and left ambiguous, how building inspectors would get support for the energy code. And Fred highlighted this to me. We, Ben and I and others escalated, Fred personally escalated in DOER, who was working on the code and describing the problems and stuff for over a year, 18 months. And there's been some training done in Forbes, they did some training. It's all on the kind of the technical aspects of kind of why the code, and exactly what does the code say. But it's missing checklists and kind of specific guidelines that building inspectors normally use, and of course, they're doing their job. And Fred has articulated this to me, he's done it through DOER. I met one of the senior people at DOER at a Green Communities Conference in January. I brought it to her attention, she was well aware of it, well aware of Fred's escalation of this issue. And I've been copied in on some letters between DOER and DOL. And the answers are these kick-the-can-down-the-road-type answers. So in collaboration with Fred, he escalated it to the Mass Federation of Building Officials, which I've almost been able to say without stumbling. The, and got the letter that you've been shown here. And I think that's a sufficient statement of their concern, but I think it's important for municipalities to describe it more in our operational needs and what it means to us. And for Sustainable Westboro, we are, one of the changes that came about in the 2023 change is the introduction of a higher-level code, specialized code. And there's an opportunity for us to go to the Climate Leaders Program. It requires approval of that. And because of this inadequacy in the training, Fred's concerned about taking on any, one more straw or one more issue. So we agreed to defer it from the spring meeting. We're hoping to get it done in the fall meeting, but we need to get these issues addressed. So we want to escalate it. And so we drafted the letter, actually initially intending for us to sign it. And then it was suggested that maybe it get escalated to you and have Christie sign it. So that's where we are. We're happy to sign it with your permission for Christie, or whatever you recommend.
Perfect. Questions? Does it make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it makes perfect sense, and thank you, Fred, for your advocacy and, you know, it's interesting how things get sort of rolled out, and it's like, whoa, like, what's the practical nature? And what have we forgotten? So thank you for your advocacy, thank you for the collaboration, for the work of our sustainable coordinator. So I'm supportive, I'm continue to be supportive of this. I mean, the code is the code, I don't have to be supportive of it, but I'm supportive of you guys having the right tools to do your, to do your work, to enforce as well as to educate and inform.
So are we comfortable with the motion as it is in the...
I think so, because it sounds...
Excuse me?
Yep, go ahead.
As I heard the motion, it didn't mention Department of Licenseur. I think it should mention both departments. So...
DOL.
Okay.
Maybe I'll take a stab at it?
Oh, you're going to do it, okay.
Move to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute a letter to the Department of Energy Resources and the Department of Licenseur...
Occupational Licenseur.
Occupational Licenseur, advocating for the re-establishment of the BBRS Energy Advisory Committee and providing training to local building officials to enhance the implementation of updated energy codes.
Sucks. You said enhanced, but I think it was advance.
Advance, advance, thank you.
Yeah, and there was a second, any further comments or questions? Not all those in favor? Thank you very much for bringing it forward, appreciate it. Yeah.
Shelby's took all my, all the...
Okay, next on our agenda is local action units application for to Donia Drive Village Commons. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
So I'm James Erhard, I'm counsel to the Village Common Realty Trust. This evening, all of Fuukansari, he's the main developer behind this. And we're here on a, seeking approval from the board for local action unit application. There's four units on this development, out of 19. Everything else has been approved and so on, we're just looking for a sign-off on that. Once you sign off on that, we can forward on to the EO HLC, off to the state to sign off on it. We think we're about two months from shovel on the ground, maybe?
About approximately, or less.
Less, so this is more of a pro peremptory approval we're looking for.
Okay. Christie, any?
Yes, so Mr. Insari has been before you, I think, a couple meetings ago, and with, for this, for the same agenda item, as well as the sewer privilege fee waiver. There continues to be concern that you, that both the Community Development Director and Director of Planning have shared with you in letters, which have also been shared with Mr. Insari and his attorney. You know, given the concerns related to his other properties and the affordable units, the recommendation is to not approve this this evening. And I think they're, they're both here, Mr. Leonardo and Ms. Jingerest, do you have questions?
Yep.
Yeah, so I read the information provided in the packet, both the LAU application as well as the sewer connection fee waiver, which is our next agenda item. And I'm taking this a little out of order, to me, it doesn't make sense to approve the sewer connection fee until the LAU is approved. Those two are connected together. My question to our building, the Community Development Director, from a build perspective, is there, I understand the LAU application to be more, it has to do specifically with affordable housing and kind of certification of that. If we don't approve the sewer connection fee waiver, does that slow down ability to design and develop? Or that's really just a fee, that's a transactional fee process?
Fred Leonardo, Community Development Director, as far as waiving the fee, that would, it doesn't slow the process down, it's just a matter of whether they pay the fee or not.
It's really transactional, understood, thank you, okay. So, yeah, and, you know, I, while I, I'm pleased that this development will have, you know, the four units of affordable housing, I think we have some outstanding issues, albeit with at Zara Drive, totally different property, but by the same developer. And given the time that it's taken to resolve those issues at Zara Drive, I'm not supportive of moving forward with this application at this time. I think that needs to be closed out. I do want to acknowledge that progress has been made, I'm glad to see that, as recently as the past couple of weeks. But there are clearly some, still some issues that remain at Zara Drive that we need to just close out before I would support the LAU at Donia Drive.
I don't know if you want us to jump in before you give your thoughts, but, well, I guess we say what you guys have to say, and then we...
Yeah, I guess, I guess for mine, I think, because it was introduced, I'd love to hear from our Community Development Director and Planning Director on, I know they submitted letters here, but any updates from them as we're going through this.
Fred Leonardo, Community Development Director, so the only update we really had is that, to date, 11 of the 12 people that live at Zara Drive have agreed to allow Mr. Insari to go forward with the investigation. But that's about as far as we've gotten. So I will give Mr. Insari a formal letter that says at least 11 of the 12 have agreed to allow him to go on to the property, but we haven't gotten any further into the investigation than that. So I don't have any timeline from him, when he believes the investigation will start and/or end. We, until that is even done, we have no plan going forward as far as what would happen for the corrections. So we're still a long way from getting any kind of timeframe. I wouldn't feel comfortable at all until we get some kind of timeframe that's been agreed upon by the town, too, of what the resolutions of the problems have been, or are, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Insari, can I respond to that? And I might be a preliminary to this. And I'm new to this, and I did a deep dive in the doc... I'm new to this. And I did a deep dive in the documentation, as my office did. Let's be clear, there really is almost no issue here. These are twelve units that were developed in the last five or six years, finished up about two or three years ago. After a historic amount of rain, one of the units had basement flooding. Mr. Ansari, one unit, Mr. Ansari was brought in by the homeowner, and he offered to do a sump pump on it. That would have solved the problem. There was nothing from the town for months, and now we've got to where we are right now. As far as I understand, there's one other house that may have had flooding. That's it. This is not some endemic problem. This isn't some structural problem. This isn't a failure by Mr. Ansari and his company to develop twelve houses. There's been no complaints except for one guy who flooded and maybe a second. As we've said all along, his engineer, we're not sure if there is even a problem to solve. But we're doing everything we can to solve it. We've now got a situation where he's going to pay to cut up eleven lawns, fix landscaping, looking for a ghost. He's done everything he possibly can to solve a problem we're not even sure exists. And as a side note, even if the problem exists as you say it is, which is simply a question of water and how it's flowing, to deny him a perfunctory regulatory L A U application approval to go forward, that's apples and oranges to tie one to the next cannot be done. You're saying you fixed this, this water issue, which we dispute to an extent that he is moving forward just to get it done. We're going to deny you, everything else has been approved, planning, zoning, everything. We're ready to put a shovel in the ground. But guess what? We're going to deny you four L A U applications because of some de minimis issue in another project. You can't do that. It is, it is extortionistic in nature. You fix a problem. We don't think it's a problem, but we're going to work with you on it. We don't, as Mr. Lawrence just said, we don't know the timeline. We don't know what's going to be done. But we're going to get there while he is paying interest, loans and everything on this project to chase a ghost. Now, you can be aggressive on the property at Zara Gardens. You can fine assess whatever you want to do within the confines of the regulations. But to deny, again, four unit L A U, apples and oranges. Indeed, the problem, even if it exists as the way Ms. Leonardo says it is, is so de minimis in nature as not be allowed this board to question the character, the finances, the ability of this developer to develop this property. This is his third project in town. That project, twelve units, has had a water issue, take as Ms. Leonardo says, that we're trying to solve and figure out what I mean, the investigation means we're trying to find the problem. Yet we're going to hold up this guy's development, the interest, the loans, the costs, to chase a Community Development Director's concerns? Doesn't work that way. We're happy to work on that problem, but deny him four L A U applications over that? I think it's a line that we lay, there's a two different lines.
I just wanted to say that Town Council disagrees with Mr. Ansari's attorney. You do have the discretion to not approve this application. Can I respond?
Yes.
Just, so, so as our packet states, and I appreciate council's views, and wouldn't have expected anything less. This, and appreciate that you acknowledge you're new to this, not your practice, this particular situation. We, as a town, have been dealing with this since at least March of 2024. It's going on a year at the Zara Gardens. With, I don't even want to guess how many hours of work involved by both Mr. Ansari as well as our town staff. Repeated efforts on that part of the town to resolve this. We, as you will, would see in the records, we've delayed acceptance of the roadway because of the issues that have been not resolved. I strongly disagree with your characterization of chasing a ghost. The town is not in the business of asking developers to chase ghosts. There is, there's ample documentation that there is a problem at Zara Gardens and it hasn't been fixed, number one. And number two, I would say that your client has not been highly cooperative through this time, which is why it's taken so long and why we find ourselves here. And it's unfortunate that he wants to move another project forward, and yet we have this sort of other issue going on. I would also add, and someone here who may have better reference, that the Department of, what's the new E O H L C?
E O H L C.
Thank you. They have effectively put Mr. Ansari on warning about approvals. So this is not, this is not just a board issue. This is a state entity recognizing issues with this developer, with all due respect.
I appreciate it. My response would be, I'm not, I would disagree with the characterization that E O A, the state agency, has put him on notice. I don't, I don't read that to be the case. I don't read the correspondence to say that. But also, you brought up the fact that at this time, the town has denied it to become a public roadway. Well, that is the avenue. Those are the carrots and sticks. We're not going to give you a public roadway here. And so therefore, you got to fix your problem. That's how this works. We got a public roadway. We're not going to allow it. You got to fix your water and sewage. But to, to do a hammer on a, on a bug like this. And we say, what is the problem? And I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but what is the problem? There's some flooding in some basements, and we have a theory as to what it is. He followed the guidelines at the time, and now being told that the design approved then is supposed to be changed now. We, we ask, what is the problem? There's a problem of surface water flooding. Okay. These aren't, billings falling down, these on concrete basis. This is a developer who was over cost runs, didn't pay his property taxes. We have twelve units. As far as I recall, only two houses, and I could be wrong, have complained about flooding. Two. I can go to my neighborhood right now and find two guys that complain about anything. If you ask them to, they go to town every week about something. I know who they are. That's what we're talking about. I mean, this is the second time, I believe, we're here on this L A U. And you've denied the public roadway? Fair enough. I get it. I understand that theory. I understand fines, assessments, whatever you can do. But you're now denying him the ability to forward an application to the state to develop nineteen units. And those are affordable housing units. Westboro, as we know, is all towns are getting more expensive. We're giving the opportunity to middle class people to move into this town. We're going to deny it because of surface water or sewage issue, not even surface water issues. Deny him the public roadway. Assess him, fine him, whatever we do. But to deny and shut down another project? I think it's a bridge too far.
I would, I would use, just for the board's benefit, I would use the word delay. I think that, that was what we said before. I mean, if technically what were the action would be to deny it, in my words, this is a delay.
Yes.
This is not a denial, just so the board is clear in terms of my frame of mind.
One response before, if I may, let Mr. Ansari jump in, is often a delay becomes a denial. Holding costs, interest costs, working, those have been.
Counsel, that's, I, I'm just being very clear.
Sure. No, I understand exactly.
I, I understand. This is not, this is not a delay tactic on my part as a voting member of this board. And I don't believe that it is the intent of our town staff to delay to the point of like, you know, exhausting Mr. Ansari. We just want the issue to be resolved, and it hasn't been all along at the, at the other property.
And that I appreciate. And I don't think this board has any desire to delay or shut him down. But I, I often do know, we've all seen it, that often relationships, when you're a developer in town, can become frayed.
Yep.
And I'm concerned that is at play here, not with you guys, but in other areas. And we've seen it all along. We've all know it. It's a hidden secret. And I'm worried that's in play right now. But before Mr. Ansari jumps in, because I know he just wants to jump in here, I have to emphasize, you don't make it a public roadway. You assess, you fine. You don't go ahead and shut down, not shut down essence, call, cause, holding costs that can be punishing over something like this. I mean, I just, we're talking some water issues. So Mr. Ansari, do you want to jump in?
I just wanted to get a few things clear. I really, really think I've been demonized here, saying that I'm not doing anything. That is completely false. That's why we wrote the letter we did. I was working on this project with Lisa, the D P W person, for last year, year and a half. She asked me to dig up the entire drain line I did. She asked me to show all the connections I did. Everything was fine. Everything was cool. While this was happening, the, Fred jumped in. And he says, oh, well, you know, this is all set now. So he started talking about some court violation. I don't even know what that court violation is. I checked with the, the, the state B B R S, and they're saying we, we're not aware of any such thing. That's why I honestly believe that this has become a huge issue out of nothing. Planning Board approached me to get this project going. I had a parcel of land on Oak Street. They came to me. I didn't go to the planning board asking for this.
This project being Village Commons.
Yeah. And they said, would you give us that land and we'll work with you on this project? So I started doing that. And even the selectmen or the town meeting accepted that land in the, in the meeting that you guys had three days ago. So this is total demonization. If somebody wants to sit down with me, I'll produce all the emails. One guy started that, you know, problem. And then I asked, I said, can I go ahead and put a, put a sump pump in it? Will that resolve the problem? Fred said, in March 12th meeting, I know there are five other officials sitting and they're all witnesses to it. He said, can you get this done in one week? Then I'll have the road accepted, meaning Zara Drive accepted. This was in March 12th meeting. But after that, I said, yes, get me the permission from that guy to access this property. I'll go ahead and get that sump pump in.
March 12th, 2024.
And then, since then, I never heard back from him. Never. And then all of a sudden came the court violation stuff. So if this ever goes to court, and a lot of stuff will come out, and you will see that there was no, you know, delay on my part. I was very, very, you know, good about responding to it. That, honest to God, there is no issue there. It is an issue that we have created, or we are creating. And now we've got to go dig up the lawn. When he first wrote the letter to all the homeowners to come forward with, with any problems, nobody responded except for the same guy that had their problem and one other person who was asking questions. So then the time went on, then he asked me, well, write another letter to them saying that we'll fix all your lawns if you ever have to dig it all up. When I, and I gave him that letter. It was after that that people came forward and said, okay, you know, we'll allow you access to the house. They don't even know what we're going to be doing on their lawns. If they find out, we're going to dig up all their lawns and reroute this and reroute that. I think it's, it's a mess. It's a completed project.
The fundamental truth is this, is at the end of the day, at the end of the day, Mr. Ansari is a man who's fully funded, has been, he's lived in town for fifty years. Been a homeowner in town, raised his family here. You hear it all the time, but it matters. He's fully funded in tough economic times. He's developed all of his properties. He's paid his property. We, we all know bad developers. This is not one. At the end of the day, you know, I don't know Ms. Leonardo. I'm, I understand the situation. What we know is there's two people have complained, at most two, about water flooding. That's it. We're not talking lawsuits. We're not even, my mind's not even there. I don't want to go there. My goal is to have these four affordable units forwarded to the state. And indeed, if the state thinks he's a bad guy or questionable, don't take your application. They'll shut it down or deny it or delay it. That's where it belongs. Don't deny him a public roadway. Fine him. What if you want to do over Zara Drive is fine. But this is a conscious developer who has done what he's supposed to. Is there dispute with him, Mr. Leonardo? Obviously. We could see the tension right now. But at the, him, the anger from coming right now. But the fact is that we're being asked, you're being asked by a vote of three to five is all we need, to forward the L A U to the state agency. And the only reason, because it's really a perfunctory vote, the only reason you would deny it was to force him, i.e. punish him for another development, which at most has flooding or pipe issues, which he has fully agreed to fix. Apples, oranges, punishment for non-projects. That's where I'm at. So we would ask the support, get the three votes, and then we can come back here over the public road and Zara Gardens and so on. But I just think to deny the L A U at this time is really overplaying the hand and the concerns that exist. And he's going to be punished from interest costs, holding costs, and they are significant. And I just want to avoid that altogether. So.
Just wanted to say one last thing. There's eighty thousand dollars of my money waiting to be released on Zara Gardens. If there is any problem there, that's eighty thousand dollars that you guys are holding in a cash bond with my bank. So that's, that's the guarantee that will, and I am working on trying to get this thing resolved. I never made any delays on my part.
Even if he fundamentally stuck his hands out, go pound sand. That's why we all know we have bonds, which we don't need to access. That's my point. I mean, I, I just think this is a regulatory, this is a perfunctory action, which is being held up because of an over concern about water and other.
I mean, I just want to jump in. I think, I appreciate the comments. A couple of things. We're, we're talking about residents of this town. We represent the residents of this town. We have our town employees. I trust our town employees. They're giving us a recommendation based on the work they're doing, that at this point, we should not move forward. I am going to trust them on that. I want to see this continue to work. We want to get this done. I'm sure you want to get it done. We want to get behind us. We want the town accepted. I want our residents to have a town accepted roadway. We want to make sure they have proper drainage. We want to make sure, as I understand, that this is being dug up because there's questions as to, were these ever put in correctly in the first place? And they may not be flooding now, but this is our chance to fix it before we accept the roadway and other things happen. So I appreciate it. I understand your thoughts are perfunctory. I think we have the ability not to do this tonight. I am not in favor myself of doing it. I want to get this other thing fixed. I don't think, we're not trying to, and you're like demonize or whatever. We just want to get this right. We want you to build that property. We appreciate the sending unit that was approved at town meeting. We want this to continue, but we want to get this thing fixed right. So we can trust as you move to this next project, that this is going to be done right too. And this is our ability to ensure that this gets done to the satisfaction of our residents as we hear from our town employees. So I trust our town employees more than I trust myself because I don't understand the stuff. I am not engineer or a building commissioner or a planning director. So I appreciate you coming here. And I really think that if we get to this point where things are happening and to the satisfaction of our town staff, we will move forward with this. This is not a denial by any means. This is, this is, yes, it's a delay to you, but we want to get this moving forward for you. But we need to get this done correctly and fixed on this side. And I think we give up bargaining power by moving this ahead while we're still waiting for things to get done on this side. So that's my take. I open up to the rest of the board for any comments or questions.
So, as you know, I'm very familiar with, with this. And I'm, I do support our building commissioner, Community Development Director. I do support our planning director. But I feel like timing on all of this is an issue. Right? You know, the, the ground is just thawed. That really to execute any solution in December, January is probably not feasible. Right? And from what I understand, things are moving forward at Zara Gardens. One of the conditions the planning board put on the new project at Village Commons was that Mr. Ansari hired a project manager so that we could avoid.
Yep.
I don't want to say mistakes, but so that we, we felt like a professional manager would have a better.
Process.
Process and resolution and so on. Mr. Ansari's done that, and that project manager's been approved. Right? We've already accepted the sending parcel. Right? I feel like we're in the building season. Right? This is the time where, you know, one of the conditions of the permit was that he cannot get a building permit until he has approval of the, the affordable units. So if we delay this, this may not, that might cause this project to be delayed a full year. Maybe that's unrealistic. But, you know, I understand the timing issues. And that's why I'm inclined to say, let this go forward. There is a bond on Zara Gardens. There is other outlets that the planning board could use. And I do trust Christie when she says council says we can relate these two projects. But I feel like, you know, they're two separate projects. And I'm uncomfortable telling him, you can't move forward with your new project because we, what, we think you're going to screw that one up too? No, I don't, I don't, I think he's acted in good faith on that. You know, as long as we have measures to get the old project fixed, which I think the bond is, you know, I'm really uncomfortable slowing down this process just, just for this, well, again, it's a big issue if there is flooding. So, you know, that's just how I feel. Thanks. One more thing. I want this town to get a better reputation of being a place where developers, you know, commercial enterprises feel, feel like we're easy to work with. And to be honest, I think the reputation is that Westboro is a hard place to, to build. So again, no slight on our staff. I just want, you know, I want to figure out how we, as a town, can do better there and change that perception.
Thanks, Mark. Other comments?
Sure. I'll go unless you want to go. So, Mark, I appreciate all your, your comments and certainly your insight coming from the planning board and your knowledge of these projects. I, I'll just say to Mr. Ansari, you know, I certainly don't want to delay you. I want you to be successful in the project. However, I do have strong concerns and I would just. However, I do have strong concerns and I would just mention to your council that while it may be just one or two, you know, families or residences at Zara Gardens, the issue is it's not de minimis to them. You have a flooded cellar, that's a big issue. And for the, I actually can separate these two things. And I can actually say that I do not support this moving forward right now with just Danta Drive. And that is because in reading our, our Director of Planning's letter on March 19th, it's clear to me that there's no less than five items that have not been addressed, that have been requested multiple times, just on that project by itself. And that for me is enough to not, you know, support the LAU at this point. I think that those issues need to be addressed. I'm certainly glad to hear that there is a planning, a project manager on the project. I think that will help make that project successful and certainly bring more transparency and more foresight into what issues might be being, come across and being raised back up to the planning department. But that alone to me is enough to not, not do it. Zara, the Zara Drive issue, again, there's been outlines, you've been before us, before, outlines of issues that need to be addressed. It's great to hear that 11 of the 12 residents have now, I guess, signed off on this. I didn't, my question to our Director of Building Department is, is, you know, do we need all 12, right? In order, or is 11 enough? Because I imagine if I'm hearing correctly, there's going to be yards dug up, road dug up. I certainly don't think the town should be taking responsibility for that road if it's going to have to be dug up after we take responsibility. But again, I'm separating these issues, but just if, do we need...
Sure. Fred Leonardo, Community Development Director. So if the 12, and I have another correspondence today, I actually haven't heard back whether the 12 person will agree. It's just for his, Mr. Ansari's investigation, his team, they just wouldn't go on that particular property. So if there was any issues there, that owner would be basically sacrificing any course, any recourse with us.
Future recourse.
Right.
Yeah.
Right? So yes, absolutely, investigation go forward, the 11 of the 12 agreeing to it.
And were the two, I'm hearing one or two houses there are at issue, are those both, those homes part of the 11 that have signed off?
Yes, and so I didn't want to get all into the weeds. This has been going on for much longer than a year. The formal, formal letter started in March of 24. I remember what year we're in. But there's actually emails going back to 2020. I have documentation going way back. We tried to get resolve of some of this many years ago. This is not a new issue. There is at least a significant issue for one of the homeowners, six Zara, but there are other issues that have been identified. And they were identified through, the homeowners actually took to hiring a company to do investigation by cameraing the lines. That's one of the things that they retorted. This goes back long before I wrote any formal letters. So they discovered that by paying themselves to investigate this, then the town's DPW got involved and did more exploratory. So there's evidence of this. I also gave a formal violation notice in October of 24 to Mr. Ansari, which he never appealed. He was quoted mass general law, the building code, to what his options were at the time. He subsequently paid a $1,000 fine, which I did fine him. I could have fined him and the law allows me to fine him $1,000 a day. He'd be up to many thousands of dollars if I fined him on that. I didn't find that to be prudent because we wouldn't move forward. We just ended with a legal battle. So we, I haven't gotten into all the weeds there. But right now, we've had agreement at 11 of the 12 to go forward with the investigation.
Yeah, so I appreciate that, Fred.
No, hold on one second.
Well, I want to, yeah, sorry. I want to keep just going down this line of thinking here for a moment. Again, I assume that you saw the letter from our Director of Planning dated earlier this month where it outlined a number of different issues, again, at least no less than five issues. And I'm curious, is there, is there, because I've seen, I've seen this come before the board in a similar fashion just a few months ago when we had this, there was an outline of, hey, here are the issues that you need to go solve. Doesn't sound like they've been addressed. Here's another list that we go through. Are there specific issues, Mr. Ansari, that you are contesting in this list? I'll just give you an example of one.
Are we talking about, Mr. Welch, the new development or the...
I'm talking about the new development, the new development, Dana Drive. So specifically called out prior commencement of construction, a pre-construction meeting between the town staff, including but not limited to the Director of Planning, Building Commissioner and Town Engineer shall be held at the DDPW office. At that time, the construction schedule will be reviewed along with any other items referenced in this decision. This has not occurred and we're waiting for other conditions to be met prior to this meeting. Why hasn't that occurred? Are you objecting to that occurring? I mean, I expect that all of these things in this list are taken care of before you come back before this board, otherwise it's kind of a waste of our time.
There's only two things that are outstanding on those. I have submitted everything to the town planner. One of them is what happens to be a letter that I need to give to DPW about the structure that we're going to be using in the new project. And we got the plans now. The same exact structures will be used, but used in phase one. So it's not even a new thing, just one line answer, same as the ones before. And the other thing that we are waiting for is there was a condition of getting a building permit was the EOHLC approval. That was the other one, for which we are in front of you to move that forward. I mean, that is, I need that in order for us to have that, the building permit, if I'm right. I think Jennifer Gingras is here and I, you know, follow her a letter. And I think that's probably the only two things that are waiting. And the other one was the fire engine pass. Nothing has changed there. The same exact development is being used to develop these new 19 units. So the fire truck pass, they call it, it's the same, so.
But it hasn't been uploaded to permit, uploaded to Permit Pro yet, which is the requirement. It hasn't been uploaded to Permit Pro yet, which is the requirement.
Yes, it is being uploaded. It, it just, it's a narrative that we have to let them know.
My point is, there's a number of issues here that have not been addressed, at least as of the writing of this document. I think it'd be prudent if we could have our Director of Planning come up and speak and give us an update on these. Because I think this is your checklist for your project manager to go through and say, when are these things going to be done?
Jenny Gingras, Director of Planning. So those items there need to be completed before the building permit is issued, so not necessarily before the LAU application is signed up on.
Okay.
The planning board had a condition from their decision in December of 2023 that EOHLC approval was received for the affordable units prior to the building permit. That did not happen. When Mr. Ansari applied for the building permit, we flagged it for missing that item along with the rest of these. So to move forward with the EOHLC approval, he needs a sign-off from this board on the LAU application. But what you all have read in the letter, we have concerns about that because of the issues with the affordable units at Zara Gardens. We have had discussions with EOHLC many times and they also say that this is a violation of the regulatory agreement for the affordable units at Zara Gardens. And they're in support of whatever this board decides about moving that forward. I just also want to reiterate that we are not asking for the work to be completed at Zara Gardens prior to the LAU application being signed. We are asking for a final plan of action. That is what we have been waiting for, what we've been asking for, all of these letters that have gone back and forth between the engineering department, Building Commissioner, Community Development. That's what we've been looking for. We're not asking for the actual work to be completed. We just want to see a final action plan that's approved.
Can I ask a question, Jenny, on that? Because plan has many different iterations, right? Because my understanding is there's investigative, investigation work that needs to be done to understand what is the problem, right? So that is one plan. Then there's the plan to rectify, fix the problem. So when you say plan, what are you expecting for to kind of feel like this is going down the right path that, you know, that you feel that you can make an approval?
An action plan of how to fix the problem.
Of how to fix a problem.
Investigation work will show what the problem really is. And then a plan on how they're going to fix it moving forward. And then we'll be comfortable with moving the application forward. I mean, we, we don't want to hold it up. We understand EOHLC takes, you know, a few months to get that approval done prior to us receiving that notification. So it's a long process, but the special permit was approved with that condition in December of 2023. And we've, you know, we've had this condition out there this whole time. Mr. Ansari has known about it, so.
Okay, no, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and I just, one slight additional clarification on that. Will that plan include, is your expectation that that plan also include milestones, target dates when things are going to be done? Or is it just a punch list of things that they're going to get done?
Yeah, part of that is a schedule too, so that we can see when the work is being completed. So yeah, it would also include a schedule.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah. No, I think I was recognizing.
Sorry, one second, apologize.
So I'm, so Pat, I understand your concerns about the, that checklist, but those are conditions to be met prior to building permit, not prior to LAU application. So, you know, there's quite a few big steps on that checklist that were done. Design review, I can tell you, is no easy hurdle. You know, again, a couple of the other ones.
And the project manager.
And the project manager. What I don't understand in this correspondence that was given to us, and you'll have to forgive me, because this original project was permitted through ZBA as a 40B and not through planning board, so.
You're talking about Zara?
Zara Gardens was permitted through ZBA. I, and maybe, there's nobody here from engineering, but maybe Jenny or Fred could tell me, was the project built according to the engineering that was approved in the original process? And it was a case that that engineering was faulty?
If he could answer that.
No, I was hoping Jenny or Fred could answer that because I, I mean, I understand that any engineering's not here. Farouk, I expect you to say, yes, it was, but I just want...
I mean, we have, that was an issue we brought up at my office, quite frankly. And that's, it precisely was built to engineering specs. And the issue right now is they want to rejigger engineering because of flooding from two houses. That's it. And this pipe that Mr. Leonardo talked about, we are 100% confident that test was not accurate because of mud and silt that gets in the middle of it. It was a failed test. Because that failed test, the town's been on fireworks over this project over flooding two basements. He built two specs, built to engineering. And what I would say is, Ms. Leonardo mentioned fines, he fined him $1,000. Fine away. That's how this works. Go find that project and we'll fight about it. And this project moves forward. It's as simple as that. We are now using this as a bludgeon when you have avenues in the other project. He's doing what he's supposed to do, it's down the specs, there's nothing he can do. I looked at the correspondence, everything he does, it means whack a mole. And that's a real problem here, I don't know what he can do.
Just to answer that question that he asked, is that okay, Mr. Chibber? The plans were built, approved by the engineers that we had hired, they were submitted to the DPW, they reviewed it, back and forth, back and forth, they approved it. We took those plans, we built them exactly accordance to those plans. And then every step of the way, there will be a DPW inspector. Water line being put in, inspection. Sewer line inspection, that's pretty normal process. They just didn't do it for me. That's just normal. Everything was done. And there are certain things that the inspector, who is no longer with the town, told us to do in a certain way, otherwise he will not sign off on the occupancy permit. Again, this, you know? So we had to do exactly like he wanted, and we did that, no problem. One house got flooded in that 2020, year 2020 flooding that we had, half of Massachusetts was underwater. That's when he got some water in the basement. So the reason for that was, which I, I'm an engineer by trade. I said, listen, your house is sitting on ledge. That is the only house that's sitting entirely on ledge. So the water has no place to go. It came through the cellar. I said, we'll put a sump pump in it and the problem will 100% be solved because it's suck the water right on, blow it up. They all were connected. And then, after that, I don't think there was any water. They keep referring to the emails that they got months ago. Ask them, all this rain we had, did anybody get any water in the basement? Where is the water going? It's all flowing properly.
You will find, and since that initial flooding, there's not been any flooding in that project. Think about that. Yeah, we've got Ms. Leonardo and other saying, we want you to now cut 11 yards up to go look for a problem that doesn't exist. Fine him $1,000 a day, let's do it. And let's get the LAU moving forward in this project and go find him $1,000, $10,000 a day and we'll go talk about it in front of superior court. But right now, this LAU needs to be forwarded. He's being hit with heavy costs. It's impossible to build this project. And that's why I'm here.
Can I ask a question? So on Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024, Reiko Hayashi, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that person's name, she's from, this person's from EOHLC, we all know the name, sent an email to you, Mr. Ansari. And it says, Farouk, due to your lack of cooperation with the town in addressing the drainage situation, and for public purposes here, we're talking about Zara Drive, Zara Garden, which have plagued the homeowners for years, we will recommend you be put on the mass housing suspension list immediately unless you, unless you respond to the violation order issued by Commissioner Leonardo. We expect to hear from you by the end of the week. That was dated Wednesday, October 23rd. There's a second email, Monday, again, from the same person to Mr. Ansari, Monday, December 30th, 2024. Farouk, I was informed you have not made any progress in the corrections cited in the violation order and therefore fines are understandably, meaning by the town, being imposed. We will need to hear from you by the end of this week when you will comply with the violation order. So my question is, is has the suspension list designation, for lack of a better word, been removed?
Okay. I need to give you a specific answer to that. Hayashi was brainwashed. I know Rico Hayashi, I know very well. She is, she approved several of my projects. These people brainwashed her, saying that they have problems here. She doesn't come out here, she has no idea. She's not going to listen to me, she'll, they'll listen, she'll listen to hell. Yeah, and that's why those emails are coming from there, there's no issue there. So I said, Hayashi, why don't you come down here and then take a look at it? See what's, see, see where the problem is? They write the emails and making it look like I'm not doing the work. All the work that I did, nobody ever mentioned to Hayashi that I dug up the entire drain pipe throughout the whole subdivision because Lisa wanted it, checked all the drain pipes and then made sure they're all there. And they're all, these are all on camera and on video. Where is, you guys didn't hear about that from these people?
To answer the question.
They're just, it's just not fair, the way they're acting on this.
To answer the question, as for the state agency, Mrs. Harashi, I might be saying the name incorrectly, I apologize. Hayashi, apologize. Her, those emails you received were directly responded to by correspondents from town officials. And based on those correspondence from town officials, the state agency regulator is going to be like, we got some problems, have you solved it? Tell, Mr. Ansari should have been more responsive to those emails to state regulatory agency, and he should have been.
I did, I did.
And so I think you'll find the state regulatory agency, when they hear the actual style of the story, and I don't know if he's still on that list, I don't know that. But I'm very, I don't know if he is, I don't know. But I'm very confident the state regulatory agency will have no concerns moving forward with him. As he said very dramatically, it was a one-sided communication, once he was able to be responsive to that, I'm confident the state regulatory agency will not prohibit him from moving forward with LAU. Well, let's go find out. Make a three to five vote and go let the state decide. Put this in the state's hands, let's let them.
Yeah, so I don't think anyone wants to kind of get into courts and everything else. I think, I will say though, in the planning board letter that Mr. Welch referenced, it says also, on February 26th, 2025, and again, these are our planning directors' words here, or written words. Fred Leonardo and I had a phone conversation with you, meaning Mr. Ansari, to discuss the LAU application. As discussed, the town had a conversation with Ms. Hayashi, with EOHLC, and discussed the town's concern about supporting additional development while there are unresolved issues of the existing project. Reiko, meaning Ms. Hayashi, stated that EOHLC will support any decision in the select board on whether or not to sign the LAU application. We understand, and then it goes on to talk about this meeting. My, I'm sorry. We have unfinished items on the checklist that Mr. Welch referenced. You're applying for an LAU which has to go through this board and the state to kind of tie the bow on it, and you don't know if you're still on that list?
I don't believe, I, I...
I'm not on that list.
Yeah, I can't directly say, he just said he is not.
Okay.
And I would also note that the fact that the state, Ms. Hayashi said, we'll do what And I would also note that the fact that the state, Ms. Hayashi said, we'll do what you want. That means the state has no concerns, they have no issues, they've heard the town complaining, like, well, if you want to or not, we'll back you up. So this.
We've worked with a lot of council, we have worked with a lot of state agencies on a variety of topics. And I can tell you that they just don't take the town's word for something. I can assure you, I've been part of some of those projects. So, with all due respect, I don't think anyone's been brainwashed. I feel like there's.
I would not have used that word.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
I'm going to keep writing emails.
I know, I understand. I guess, I guess, you know, Mark, I understand what you're saying about, about kind of not wanting to hold up one project for the other. I just feel like this, and I'm sorry, but I feel like the Zara, no, no, I mean, I, I, I am empathetic to the situation here as a developer. I also just feel like this has gone on for so long, and unfortunately, we're now at a crossroads, and I just am still not seeing that we have resolution on one project, and now we're bringing another, and, and I just, I'm not confident A is going to be resolved just because we, because we, A is going to be resolved, and that B is going to be successful based on A's track record, and that's my concern.
My only, I am extremely confident that A will never be resolved. We're going to cut up 11 lawns to look for a sewer line connection, which is built to engineering specs, and say individual inspection, individual specs should not have been approved. When we have one house that flooded one time, you want to cut up 11 lawns, this is not going to be resolved. This isn't, it's going to take, it's almost impossible to resolve because it's a moving target. There is no problem to solve. And if there was, they're asking us to cut up 11 lawns, do an analysis, and then fine with the analysis and fix it. That's a year-long project. And then, then, we come to you, and gosh knows what problems arise then, and then they give the LAU to the state, we're talking a year and after two years.
This could have all been resolved, though, a year ago.
Could not have been, simply could not have been.
Respectfully disagree.
And I do appreciate that, but I do know we have one, we have one flooded house, one flooded house. If we could bring all 12 of them in and I couldn't question them, please tell me what problem we've had. Only one, maybe two, will say, yeah, my house flooded a year and a half ago. Any neighborhood in Sturbridge, Westboro, Northbury, find someone flooded their house. He's been hit for it, and I'm not even sure it was resolved.
Well, Matty, I want to say, Ms. Marshall.
Yep.
This would have been resolved a year ago, it was resolved, I went out and dug up everything. But they keep expanding the scope. Jeff, I mean, Fred jumped in, I had it all resolved with Lisa, and then he jumped in and he expanded the scope to like double the, triple the size. That's why the whole thing has not been resolved. You know, it's a moving target for me. I keep going, fixing this, and they come up with something else. Now, whole investigation of the entire project. I mean, if you dig up that lawn, they're small little lawns, small little house, small little yards, and if you, if you kill either gas or electricity or water for somebody, that's a whole new mess. A beautiful subdivision, all of a sudden, it's going to look like hell, just because somebody thinks there's something wrong.
Even engineer, ex-engineering has said, and I'm summarizing it, we don't find a problem. We don't know what the problem is, but we're going to keep looking for you, and if this is the problem you say it is, if you look at the paperwork, obviously, you don't know if you have it. This is our solution to the problem we don't think exists. That's literally where we're at. We paid an engineer to come in and say, we don't know the problem. We know what Ms. Leonardo says. If this is the problem, this is how it's solved. And why we dig up 11 yards? To see if the problem exists. Think about this. We have a plant, a community development director saying, we think there's a problem, go dig up 11 yards and go prove it. My gosh.
I feel like I'm hearing the same argument.
Yeah, I wanted to add something new. So, the LAU application, I think last time we were here, Mr. Edinburgh was on the select board. He noted that it wasn't complete, and it was, I was reminded that they, it has not been signed off by the Housing Partnership Committee. So, if you are to vote tonight, it should be contingent on that. If not, I would advise Mr. Ansari to go to the Housing Partnership Committee, because they also need to sign off. Excuse me?
We have to do that, yeah, of course.
Has that application been updated, since it was lost some minutes?
Yes, I hired a consultant, I didn't fill out that application. I hired a consultant, MCL. She went through the whole thing, because the last time, one of.
Yeah, it was pointed out, there were a couple of issues.
Some concern. So I jumped right on it and got it all done. But now she's saying about some partnership, maybe there was an oversight, we can get that signed, Housing Partnership.
It's a, it's a line on the, on the application, it has a requirement for this board to sign, and then underneath it, the Housing Partnership Committee. And you did identify Ed Bain as the chair of that committee, on the application.
Once you sign that, we'll take it, we can do the signature.
Pardon? For me, it's interesting that, you know, we're fortunate that Mr. Ansari has two projects in town. Like, if he didn't have this second project, I guess, what actions would we be taking, right? I mean, would we be able to get the first project fully resolved? You know, so that I, and I imagine at this point, we would be fining Mr. Ansari daily for the other project, and we're not doing it, instead, we're, we're looking, looking at this. And it sounded like council that you would prefer we find, that the building department find him.
I would rather have this project go forward, and I will deal with the first project and the way it's supposed to be dealt with. We disagree with the town's assessment of the problem. If you want to fine us, as we all do, you know, if you're coping on the page, we'll spend time in Superior Court and talk about it. But this project, you have means to solve the first one. As you just said, what if it wasn't doing the second project? Where do you find him? Go ahead, but do not hold up the second project, that's not how it's done. And I disagree with town council, Ms. Williams. I disagree with town council.
And I guess, to our community development director, I guess, what is the maximum? Say, you fine $1,000 a day until you?
Yes, Fred Leonardo, Community Development Director. So conceivably, I can fine him $1,000 a day until the correction is taking place. So it's $1,000 as the era goes on, as the issue keeps going.
But that's really the max, that is sort of the maximum penalty for the, for the original project, as is, if there was no other subsequent project?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Oh. I just wanted to add one thing. I know it was brought up, that there's a concern about sort of the reputation of the town, and I think that what what Mr. Leonardo was doing is actually representative of how we try to work with people and not just use punitive fines, because that's not productive. And so, that's exactly what we've been trying to do, is, is work with Mr. Ansari, not just resort to fining on a daily basis, because that's just not productive, or has, or we had hoped that this working together would be more productive than just issuing fines.
Can I ask a question for, up here, Mr. Ansari as well, is stage now, we know we've got approval for 11, so inspections can start.
Yes, correct.
I guess I'm looking for a timeframe. I mean, I'd like to get this resolved, I don't think any of us want to be dealing with. What do you think a timeframe is, to both of you, to inspect and then find out, you know, the issue, and to the council speaks if there's an issue there, and put a plan in place? I mean, are we talking a matter of a couple of weeks? Is this a matter, I mean, not that it would get resolved, but in terms of plan? I mean, I'd like to get to the point, I think we all want to get to the point of have plan in place to rectify the situation. Put that behind us, move forward with the new developments. I'm just kind of, that's what I'm asking for, is a timeframe, to do this piece to it.
Can I respond to that? Or he's, okay.
Both of you can respond.
I have already, my engineer, not me, has submitted a plan, a working plan, to his department, about how we go about doing this whole thing. One house needs to be reconnected, we showed that on the plan. The other house, which they said the line is clogged or something, well, we'll dig it up and replace it. That's number two. The other one was to go on each and every property and take some shots, some surveying, you know, elevations, to see if everything is, you know, going in the right direction. For that, we needed access to the property of the homeowners. And that access, Fred had put a date of 31st of this month, by which time they must respond or else hold their peace. So, we only got like about five more days left to go, but 11 out of 12 already agreed to it. I don't have a problem starting the survey work now that we have 11 people that agree to it. But at the same time, we have to go and tell them what we are doing, because sometimes homeowners don't have any idea what we're going to do. They just agreed because they know me, that when I gave them a letter saying that we'll fix any problem, you know, if you dug up, dig up a yard. But what they don't know is why I'm even digging up their yards. I mean, they don't have a problem, there's no basement flooding, nothing, for the other 13 or 12 units. So I have to tell them, oh, this is just an exploratory way of figuring it out. But I am willing to get that thing started now, because we can go and start the survey work. Well, I have to set up the survey guy to come out and do it. He's not going to show up tomorrow, maybe two, three days from now, you know? And then we can do the survey work, you know, throughout the project, and then see where we are at with it. So, that's the plan. We can formalize and give it to him, if that's what he wants, within the next three, four days. My engineer was waiting till the end of, the end of the month, so everything was all in place.
So I guess, I mean, my take here is, is to do that, we know we have, you have to go to the Housing Partnership Committee on these LAUs anyways. I would say, let's put it on, well, look to Chris, but I'd say, put it on the agenda for the next meeting. If we see progress is happening, like you're saying, in three to four days, these surveys are happening, whatever, let's have the discussion again, we'll listen to, whatever. We want to move this forward, we want to get this resolved, we don't want to hold you up, but we also want to take care of our residents on that side. So that would be my take here, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just want to see progress, I want to see progress on this.
We meet again in two weeks.
Yep.
Yep.
So, in summary, you want me to have that plan to him about what we're doing?
Yeah.
And then we can move forward with this.
Yeah, in summary from my side is, I want to see this working together, answering questions, getting the surveys out there, and see it moving forward in the direction that, that we're working cooperatively together. For us to see that, and that will build the trust that says, hey, this is moving forward, and bring it, then bring it back, and we can hopefully evaluate, basically move forward with the LAU at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, I disagree with that, but I hear what you're saying. I appreciate it, I hear your sentiments.
Yeah, Ian, I mean, I think what you summarized was the last paragraph of Jenny's letter, which says, before the town staff can recommend approval of the LAU application for Village Commons, we'd like to see that final plan and any all corrections of the issues described in the previous letters regarding Zara Gardens. That's just the first sentence of it, but that's what I, that's what I want to see, is progress towards that.
Yep.
So Ian, from a process standpoint, do you need a motion, or no motion is, you'll just put it on the next agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But, so we have some guideposts here. It appears to me that if he has forwarded a plan, Mr. Leonardo, I guess, agrees with the plan in substance, and they've begun the process of that plan, that is, the board would find out the kind of forward progress which would appease their concern. Is that a fair statement? We need to know roughly what we need to do here.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's a fair statement. And as I said, I want it to be working cooperatively, I don't, I don't believe that there's any buddy trying to hold things down. We want to get this right. You want to get this right. You want to move forward, we want your new development to be right.
But, but, but I just want to clarify, and I probably should have read the entire paragraph, because the next sentence says, said plan will also need to be approved by town staff, including engineering and building staff. So it's not just a matter of presenting the plan. It's a matter of that they have actually signed off on it.
I think this sense I'm getting, Ian, sorry, is all right?
Yep, please.
Is that, you know, we need recommendation from staff, Fred, Jenny, that we should move this forward, okay?
And that's why I said cooperatively, and I do have faith in our staff, that if this is moving forward in a a manner that says, hey, this thing is moving forward, we're taking action, we're doing it in the timeframes. I think that's, I imagine they will be, this is moving in the direction we want, and that comes to us.
And I hear that, and I appreciate that. And my only concern is that often, in this particular case, I think the sense of staff is not where we want to be, but we're going to try and meet them and get it done.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
I still think you should vote in our favor right now. If you want to give a three to five, we'll take it, but.
Well, somebody would have to make a motion, and I don't think I'm going to do that.
We appreciate you being here. Yes, thank you.
Should we be on the agenda with them, two weeks?
Yeah, we'll put it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just suggest that you take item 14, just because you have people here for that?
Can I say though, for eight, which was the sewer privileges, I think that's going to push the next one as well, so, okay. Sure, I'll move to 14. So this is a request to place lawn signs for the Sustainable Westboro's Environmental Action Fair on town-owned property. Thank you.
Sorry for the delay.
Sorry for the delay in making you wait.
Come on, that was exciting.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Levine from Sustainable Westboro. As you probably know, we are preparing, Sustainable Westboro is preparing for our annual environmental action fair. It's an important annual event where we introduce the town to environmental issues and solutions to our environmental issues. We have a number of lawn signs around this town. They are our most important vehicle for informing the town of the event. I'm here today to ask permission to put a couple of lawn signs at the, one lawn sign at the golf club, and also a couple lawn signs at the pickleball courts on town property. We have done similar, similarly in past years, so I'm here asking for your permission to do so for advertising for this year.
Great, thank you. Open up to the board for questions or comments.
I guess I'll start off, being the liaison to the Sustainable Westboro Committee, certainly very supportive of the effort to get the communication out there. I know that in the past, those particular locations were used for the EV charging station, because it was a logical location. We're putting EV charging stations there, so it's got some signage around it. I will say, I am a little bit concerned of the precedence that this sets in regards to other committees in town wanting to also put signage out. I know that there's a, you know, an effort to get more signage out for various different sustainable fair, EV car shows, et cetera. Very supportive of that, put them on my yard anytime you want. But I am a little concerned about the precedence here in regards to other committees and just the desire to, to put these signs out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I'm overly concerned with other precedent. I mean, I think that Sustainable Westboro is a town committee, good town entity. It is different than the Civic Club, or Westboro Connects, or the Women's Club, looking for places to put signs. I mean, I'm not saying that one couldn't create the need for the other, saying, hey, Sustainable Westboro had something at the, you know, golf course, or on, you know, pickleball courts, or whatever. Although I do feel like the pickleball courts is new, is that not new? That is new, okay, okay. So, now we're seeing kind of scope expansion, although I appreciate that, that's a, that's a busy spot, and certainly an opportunity to advertise. You know, I feel like the golf club with the EV charging stations is sort of a natural place for those signs to exist. I don't have an issue supporting that specifically, because it is a town committee. I would not expand the scope to the pickleball courts. I think that there are ways in which Sustainable Westboro can advertise and get kind of the word out, rather than, I don't even know kind of where that would. I guess, let me, let me look at the, a 24 by 18 yard sign was asked for at both locations, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Two at the pickleball court, one at the.
Oh, two, yeah, yeah. I'm not sure what, I'm curious why the pickleball courts are just because of use?
Yes, because it's a popular.
Popular location, yeah, yeah. And are you using the West Main, East Main Street digital board sign as well?
Yes, we are.
That is being advertised, I couldn't, I didn't recall. And do we have that on the, the billboards, the digital billboards, to the extent that they advertise? Okay, those are as well, yeah.
I will point out that we try to use Ward's Corner as well. We have had a theft issue. Yes.
That's terrible.
So that's a popular location, and a great visibility location that we.
That's not what we allow for others to use, that's, yeah.
And they've been, and they've been stolen from there?
Yes. So it's another reason why we try and expand our locations.
They're nice signs, but why are they?
Thank you.
I don't understand. I don't understand why they're being stolen.
Because people are.
Not everybody believes in the cause.
You know, I, I do think that, you know, we, Patrick, to your point, we start to kind of create a little bit of a, you know, slippery slope, and then it's like, who's defining kind of what's a good cause, right? So if the cultural council wants to advertise the arts in common, like, where can those go, right? So this.
Right, and I don't actually, you know, I, I'm very supportive of Sustainable Westboro, and it's really hard for me to even say that, but, you know, I don't even have a firm grasp or picture of where all the locations are in town that people could request, right? Do we have a list of locations? And does this now open, in a way, a floodgate for all of those locations? You have these off the top of your head?
Yeah, sorry. So, so the digital sign, sign board at Lyman, the digital billboards, and Ward's Corner are really the only public ways that people are allowed to advertise on.
Okay, and we also have the ability to have the banner across the town here?
No. No, we have not had that in a couple of years because it broke.
Okay. Okay.
We do have the the signpost banners, but that's not, you know, there's only a couple events or sort of programs that have access to that. I mean, that's a sort of a completely different advertising sort of.
What one? The signpost.
The sign, the banners.
On the street light.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like it's just a different approach to advertising. So it's not sort of an easy thing for people to just decide to do, but. But yeah, that's it. So we we have pulled signs from other locations.
And the other place, albeit under, I guess, technically a different entity's control is the library routinely advertises its events. So we have some, I mean, all the time.
Yeah.
Which again, in principle, I don't, I mean, I support, but.
There's one at Hastings, I think.
The schools.
The schools are allowed.
We don't control that.
We don't, yeah, we don't control that.
But I I I'm sorry, can I ask?
Yeah, go please.
So I see in the sign by law where it says no signs shall be placed on public property without a permit from the select board. But I went through, I haven't been through all of our policies yet because there's a few of them, but I was looking for the specific sign policy relating to, like I saw the banner policy and I saw signs in the rotary policy, but do we have a written policy in regards to this? Because like based on that, what I was able to find, like I'm not even sure Ward's Corner you would need a permit for.
So.
Right?
So Ward's Corner historically has been a place like for decades has been a place where we allow that, but to your point, Mark, we don't have a policy, but this in my memory, this is the only group that has come to the board asking for this permission.
Well, I can tell you that the cultural council would like to put signs up.
They have not come and asked for that. So, I mean, they, no one else has come to the board to ask for the permission.
Yeah. So we are a committee.
Yeah.
Created by this board. Not all the other committees that you're talking about can say that.
Yeah. You know, my sense was so on our to do list is we need a sign policy, so to be to be done. You know, I I am inclined to. So let me just make sure I I'm going to make a motion here, but I want to make sure it's correct. So I would move to authorize Sustainable Westboro to install one twenty-four by eighteen yard side for the environmental action fair at the Westboro Golf Club at one twenty-one West Main Street and two at the Nelson Ball Pickleball Courts on Lyman Street from March twenty-sixth until the end of the event on March twenty-ninth. And I would, I'll stop there.
Sounds like you have a comment, though.
Well, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Move a second now.
So my comment is we need to make a commitment to write a sign policy and I my support of this is because, look, we've put a lot of effort into forming this committee. People put a lot of time into it. We've got students involved. It's aligned with our climate action plan. There are also lots of other things, great things that go on in in this town and I feel like they're just trying to do the right thing of building community and I just I don't I don't see a need to kind of be, I don't know, punitive around a policy that we don't have presently.
Yeah.
So that's so, but having said that, it could change in the future, so.
I would say, as always, I get more informed during the discussions of the board. You know, you guys, you and Mark have kind of convinced me with the policy not being available. You know, we haven't done it yet, so we can't really hold that up as, you know, evidence we shouldn't do this, right? So with that said, I would be supportive of the motion as well.
Quick question. When we were going through the other electronic billboards, did the rotary come up? Isn't that the the big sign?
Well, we have a sign in the rotary policy.
You can't put things in the ground or anything.
Can't leave them in the ground.
Isn't the, no, 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 I'm saying, no, not the in the rotary, as you approach the rotary from the west, there's that big electronic board there. Go ahead.
We have a policy for the use of that and it's it specifically does not advertise events.
Right.
So it only, and that's part of the policy. It advertises town meeting, elections and emergencies.
Right. Right.
That we want to use elsewhere when the other events aren't going on.
Right.
It's not meant to be a permanent object.
Okay, all right. The horse is dead.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
All those in favor?
Five to zero, five being present. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting.
See you Saturday.
One question or comment is it's fair is only a few days away. We really would have liked to have this two, three weeks in advance and this is, I don't know how long ago this was requested, but I think it got delayed. How far in advance do we need to make a request in order, you know, how much lead time do you need to get this type of approval?
Do you know when your fair is, when your fair is next year?
We schedule them six months in advance.
Okay, well, I would say put the request in six months in advance.
Yeah, I mean, whenever, I mean.
Yeah, I think they don't, I mean, I think, I don't know the whole thing behind it and seeing it. I know town meeting is, as you understand, is takes up a lot of our time. We talked about it earlier. But, yeah, and typically we try to get them on at the next meeting when the request comes in unless there's things there, but, you know.
I don't mean to be glib, but as soon as you know the date, just put the request in and then we could get it on an agenda.
Right.
Sooner rather than waiting till four days before the fair.
Till the next one when it's submitted, but.
I completely understand your point. You would have rather had it up for a month.
An auto email every six months.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Men Building Department Administrative Assistant Job Description. Kim, is this you?
This doesn't have a microphone. I can yell.
Here we go.
In your packet, you have a marked up version of the what is currently the Building Department Administrative Assistant Job Description. So this position is currently vacant. As you are now used to seeing, we take this opportunity to review them. While there's an awful lot of red on the couple of pages in your packet, it really doesn't substantively alter the position's functions. Some of it's just wordsmithing and trying to really clarify the aspects, the key, the key functions of that position in hopes that when we post that and recruit, it helps individuals make an assessment of if they might be suitable for the position. One of the things that we you'll see, we are now changing this reports to the Community Development Director and is is responsible for supporting that larger department. The position is primarily customer facing. We do, our intention would be once it's approved, it is a union position as soon as we have the unions review to post it and to recruit.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Just one comment. I think it's my standard comment around language skills. Is it, can we put in a sentence in regards to?
Yep.
Old language.
Yeah.
So we do in our ad, we address, we don't typically include that in the actual job descriptions.
Oh, I've seen that. I think I've seen that in other job descriptions. So we say desired.
It's typically in the ad that we post.
Okay.
One of the other points I want to make too, we have, one of the things we're doing, we have multiple administrative assistant positions across departments and they each have their own job descriptions. So some of what this is as well as is making the descriptions consistent across the departments.
Yeah, and reading what we, in the summary, what we took out, looks to me like it was pretty dated.
Yes.
We talk about taking dictation.
Yeah. That's the other piece.
Does anybody know how to take dictation?
Exactly. shorthand?
Other comments? Yes.
Just quick, so so in this area now, it's sort of a co-space with planning department and others, what are the aggregate and most favorite sources over there?
We have two full-time administrative assistant positions. One with the planning department. This is with the community development. Well, it's not an administrative assistant position. The sustainability coordinator is also a community development assistant. So there's there is some administrative component to that position as well. And conservation has a full-time conservation assistant. There are some duties beyond administrative, but it is primarily an administrative position. And then we have a ninth, part-time, non-benefit eligible, I think it's nineteen hours. Yep, supporting ZBA Historical Commission and the CPA. Yep.
So I would move to approve the community development administrative assistant job description as presented.
Second.
Perfect. Move a seconded. All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Okay.
Trade with Mark next meeting.
Next is, and I always pronounce this wrong, so request for a new livery.
Livery.
Permit for Step-by-Step Contractors LLC, Silverio Silva. Thank you for waiting, apologies. You shouldn't say my pleasure. It really wasn't your pleasure.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Silverio Silva from Step-by-Step Contractors LLC requesting a livery license that I've just taken. So that's pretty much it. I'm just trying to grow my own clientele without going through a sub another contractor and with the license that will give me the capability of doing that.
Can you tell us a little bit more about your business?
Yes, basically, most of my business, I'll bring clients who back and forth to the airport. Right now, I'm going through subcontractors like Lou Ber and Lift. Basically, there are more than one category with them. I do the top tier categories with the insurance that I have and the car and all the paperwork that I have. Unfortunately, I cannot do it by myself without the license, like being my own contractor. With that license, I'll be able to do it by myself and like I said, grow my own clientele.
Okay.
How can people find you?
That I would have to start doing more advertising and why not? I haven't started that yet because without the livery license, I wouldn't be able to get my own clientele and that would be just a waste of money.
So it's a sort of, carry before the horse, okay.
And so is your service intended to be primarily here and like to airports or is it around town to hospitals? Like, can you tell us a little bit more if if there is more?
Mostly to the airport, but as we grow, we're definitely going to provide more services in other areas as well.
Okay. And and it looks like it says the licenses for any limousine or or any vehicle designed to carry fifteen or fewer passengers. So I guess I don't know from a license perspective, is it, are we licensing one vehicle or multiple? How does that work? One vehicle, one person, okay, all right.
Any of that changes, the expectation is that you will update our office. So if there's more vehicles, more drivers, that's part of it.
All right, so as that business grows, you'll be back in front of, or at least to our town manager's office.
Looking forward to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully we see you soon then.
Questions?
Yeah, just a question. Mark, go ahead. So first of all, great, I'm glad to see a business, you know, starting off and thriving. So thank you for bringing your business to the community. I noticed I just I'm I'm, this is a new, a new license that I'm familiar with and I'm just curious, in the documentation that was provided to us, it mentions that the documentation will be housed at eighteen Lyman Street, but you also have address at nineteen Fisher Street. Where is the business going to be housed out of it? Is it, is this out of your home on ninety-five Fisher Street?
Basically, it's a remote business most likely, especially at the moment because I'm only one person, right? So I have an address out of Lyman Street for my businesses. So I get all the mail and whatnot in there. That's pretty much it. And I operate out of my house and I have, I would have no clients coming to my property as the type of business that we would be doing.
And I imagine this is going to be a limousine or or a large van or something that you'll have that'll be parked at ninety-five Fisher Street or elsewhere.
No, it's a, it's actually, it's a limousine license. You could have, that's called a stretch limo, the large ones, right?
Okay.
I actually have, it's a small car. I have a SUV and that's the vehicle that I've been using right now and that's a limousine based on the license plate and not the vehicle itself.
Okay.
But a stretch limo, when it comes to the case that I acquire a stretch limo, I'm sure that I would need an address where I can park all my vehicles and whatnot.
Perfect. That's where I was getting that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Again, welcome. Fantastic. Great to see you. Maybe I'll be able to use your service.
Thank you.
Mark, you do.
Yeah, so I assume that you're applying in Westboro for this because the vehicle's registered in Westboro and paying excise tax in Westboro and so on.
Yes, and that's, this is where I leave at too. The business is registered in here. Everything's out of Westboro. I'm a local.
Yeah, I just, I don't mean to, you know, belittle that, but I just would like to know that the excise tax is paid in Westboro and not just getting a license and not paying taxes on it. And then I'm wondering if you've been in touch with the town's economic development coordinator who could potentially help you grow your business?
No, I haven't yet.
Okay, well, I'm sure that somebody from staff will put you in touch with her because
Awesome.
She might be a good resource.
Is there a motion?
Move to issue a livery permit to Step-by-Step Contractors LLC, naming Silverio Silva as the general manager.
Second.
Move in a second, all those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Again, thank you for your patience waiting for us. I know we had you scheduled earlier, but good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
You too, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the Arbor Day proclamation.
Do you like a motion?
I would love a motion.
Okay.
I don't have to read it this time.
You don't. So I move that the town of Westboro recognize Arbor Day with the following proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other other wood products. And whereas trees in the town of Westboro increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy, therefore be it resolved that the Westboro Select Board acknowledges the importance of National Arbor Day, which will be celebrated on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. And therefore be it further resolved that the Westboro Select Board urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day in Westboro on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five by either planting a tree or maintaining existing trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations proclaimed by the Westboro Select Board on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Hey, moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a request for appointments. We've got four different areas that we're looking for. Notification information was in our packet. I'll open it up for motions and or I'll look for motions, but then we can talk if there's questions.
I can provide motions, I don't have any questions.
Yeah. Why don't we do one at a time, too?
Move to appoint Melinda McKendrick, Shannon Murphy and Keith Elms as animal inspectors for the town of Westboro for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Okay, next.
Okay. Move to appoint Alan Edinburgh as a trustee to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Seconded.
Move in a second. Anybody know who this is?
No, but just a question. No, but just a question, so he's just, he is being appointed as a resident-at-large to that?
Yes.
Great, okay, thanks.
And they get expired, so he'll get re, he'll go through it again to be appointed in June. Okay, any other comments, questions?
I'll just say thank you, Alan, for being willing to do it.
Yep.
Didn't stay retired for long.
That's right.
All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present.
Move to appoint Ann Dawson as a non-voting associate to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, just to note, this is non-voting. There's two positions that were vacant, this will fill one, but there is still a vacancy for a non-voting associate if someone is interested. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Five to zero.
Move to appoint Lee Strout and Anthony Pittman to the Veterans Advisory Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Seconded.
Any comments or questions? I think with this one too, if with this appointment, there still will be one vacancy on the Veterans Advisory Board. So just publicizing that out for folks. All those in favor? Five to zero.
And if I can, yeah, I'd just say thank you to all those that are volunteering for those positions. Very important, thank you.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Okay, next on the agenda is the town manager's report.
So just, I did mention this in my last report, but just wanting to welcome Kendra Faldata, the town senior and social services director. She started on March seventeenth, just in time to come to town meeting on the twenty-second. So some of you probably met her there. Our upcoming select board meetings on Tuesday, April first, will have a remote executive session at eight AM. Friday, April fourth, we'll have a board retreat at eight-thirty. Tuesday, April fifteenth, we'll have a remote executive session at eight AM. Our regular board meetings will be on April eighth. And then the second meeting in April was moved to April twenty-ninth due to school vacation week.
Can I just ask, do we have another joint meeting that we're scheduling?
We don't have it scheduled yet. It's looking like May for the planning board joint meeting.
A new date was suggested, I emailed you during the meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you, okay. I was just, okay, thanks.
Under the Information Technology Department, the town received a cyber awareness grant from the Executive Office of Technology Services and Security. The award consists of seats in the twenty-twenty-five municipal cybersecurity awareness training program, which will promote overall cybersecurity, posture through user and training evaluation and threat simulation. Security cameras were installed at the new community center. These are sort of bare minimum for enhanced safety and security for the recreation department, but understanding that there'll be additional cameras installed during development when we move forward with that project. The council on aging, the Westboro Senior Center is now offering donuts with the director. So that's a chance to sit with the new director and ask questions, give input. The first one is on April twenty-eighth at nine AM at the senior center. On April fifteenth, the superintendent will be visiting the senior center at one o'clock for an information session and discussion. Tuesdays from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, there's cribbage. Wednesdays at eleven, chess. And Fridays from twelve-thirty to two-thirty, rummy cube. So if games and socializing are what you're looking for, these groups welcome new players. The recreation department, the golf season started with a soft opening on March fourteenth. The course is now open daily as long as weather permits. The community center is offering a free playtime Monday through Friday from nine to two. And Saturdays, nine to noon for kids zero to five. The play space has age-appropriate toys, games, crafts and books. Also, the dog park construction is well underway and is expected to be complete within the next month and a half. The town clerk noted that the election was held on March eleventh and there were two thousand three hundred and ten ballots cast, sixteen percent of registered voters voted. The annual town meeting was on Saturday, March twenty-second, and the total voters that checked in was eight hundred and forty-three. The meeting was in session for just under ten and a half hours. And then dog licensing ends on March thirty-first. Late fees will begin April first. Over seven hundred dogs licensed in twenty-twenty-four remain unlicensed in twenty-five. So if you have not gotten your license yet, please do so by April first and you can contact the clerk's office with any questions.
Yes, please do that.
Wow.
It's a lot. Great, thank you. Of course. Okay, next is a request to approve meeting minutes. Have a motion.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five and March fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions?
You said March fourth, right?
Yeah, February twenty-fifth and March fourth.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure.
It's an easy one.
Okay.
Just a, just a quick note, I'm assuming it's just something that's a flaw in our packet. On the March fourth ones, all the fonting got goofed up. I don't know if you noticed that.
Very glitchy.
It's all blocks, like it says March and the letter M is a square. So just I would say amend the motion with fixing that.
Yep.
As long as it's on the record.
As amended.
As amended, there you go. Okay.
It's like it didn't like the Ms.
All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Thank you. Okay, issues and correspondence of the select board. You want to start?
I'll give it a try. Could I go first? First, I'll just share with the community a reminder that the Westboro Environmental Action Fair is this Saturday, one o'clock to four o'clock at the high school. I would also just mention, I think as the select board has seen, coming out of town meeting that there's a number of, have been a number of emails to the board in regards to citizens petitions. And I would look for the board at future discussion, perhaps at our off-site meeting to discuss goals, to consider form of government citizens petitions. And also perhaps a home rule petition for means-based tax alleviation in this upcoming year. That's all I have.
Perfect. Next.
I'll go. I would like to congratulate the members of the library building committee. Their hard work was recognized at town meeting this past Saturday when the library repair project was approved. I want to say thank you to our library director, Kate Carraccio, our chair, Ed Baldwin, and our vice chair, Bob Petroselli, who all represented the committee very well during that meeting. And I want to say I look forward to starting to provide updates on the actual building itself instead of the meetings for the last three years. So more to come, but thank you very much. And thank you for everybody who's at town meeting. The support for the library was overwhelming, so.
Great.
Additionally, I had made a mention towards the end of town meeting about citizens petitions and the number of votes required. We've restarted to receive some feedback at the select board. I would encourage people, you know, however you feel regarding that topic, to reach out to us. I believe it will be coming up at a meeting in the not-too-distant future. So thank you, and that's it.
Thanks. Mark.
Oh, I have a bunch. Sorry. I don't know, this is my first time doing this, so you have to tell me what's appropriate.
We'll shut your mic off.
Okay, so tomorrow night at seven o'clock is the cultural council grant reception. I believe that's in this room. And it's open to the public and I would highly encourage people do it, attend. Along those lines, we have on Thursday at six-thirty is the meet, the unsung heroine behind the New Deal, Frances Perkins, Rocky Road to Washington, which is a one-woman historical performance sponsored by the cultural council. I believe that is across the street, but location to be determined, I'm sorry. We also have the inner borough community chorus performing on Friday at the high school. That's a free concert. I'm just getting started.
You're setting the bar high.
Well, okay, no, we have on Sunday, the Congregational Church is packing meals. They want, their goal is to pack twenty thousand meals for area residents distributed by the Worcester County Food Bank and for people impacted by the devastating fires in California. And that's Sunday at eleven to one-thirty at the Congregational Church. April fifth, Saturday, which is not this weekend, but next weekend, is the Appalachian State Food Drive. And you can email westbrowfooddrive@gmail.com to register for curbside pickup. Also, the week of April fifth to twelfth is the annual Earth Day Townwide Cleanup. And you can get information on that from the Westboro Community Land Trust website. The fine arts, Westboro Fine Arts Education Association is sponsoring the MICA Festival, which is a chorus festival at the high school. That is on April fourth and fifth. They're looking for volunteers and concession donations. And I believe that's, can be attended by the public if you're interested in some really good music. The Boy Scout Troop One Hundred is offering a senior citizen spaghetti dinner on Saturday, April fifth, at five o'clock at the senior center. Hoping I can go even though I'm not a senior yet. The fire department firefighter challenge team is looking to, looking for sponsors and donations to fund their team goals benefiting the American Lung Association. And if you're interested, you can call Chief Purcell at the Fire Department at five oh eight, three eight nine, two three one zero. And then I believe the la, uh, maybe not, sorry. The Westboro Police Foundation is having a wine, beer and bourbon tasting on Friday, April fourth, from five to seven at Julio's. Fifty-dollar tickets and all proceeds go to the police foundation. Sorry, Shelby, am I stealing yours?
No, no, it's Ian. It's your making friends with the chair here.
And then on Saturday, April fifth as well, the Westboro Historical Society is doing a Johnny Tremaine Community Read-a-thon. So if you're interested Oh, I know, me too, I grew up reading that book. So if you're interested in reading fifteen minutes of Johnny Tremaine, that will be going, that will be at Memorial Hall on the second floor from nine AM to seven PM. So you can stay for the whole thing or you can go. I'm hoping all of us can volunteer fifteen minutes that day, but again, no. It's Saturday, April fifth. And then Friday, the twenty-eighth, is the high school musical at Gibbons. And I think that's it. Sorry, that's at six-thirty on Friday, twelve-thirty on Saturday, four PM on Saturday and twelve-thirty on Sunday. So you can see high school musical put on at the middle school all weekend.
Perfect. Thank you, Mark.
Nice job.
No, you stole pretty much everything I had. I just wanted to kind of echo what was said. I think that the attendance at town meeting was phenomenal. A lot of work gets put in there, as we've talked about, from the town departments, starting way back in September to prepare for this, but from the town department, from all areas. But it's all done for residents to come and act as a legislative branch. I appreciated all the folks that came out. I appreciated the discussions that were there, the patience folks had. I know that it was a long day and we went straight through, but I think it was nice for many folks to, you know, go through dinner but get out by seven-thirty at night and maybe still have time for dinner. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that was involved in that. Great day to, for our town to move forward and make decisions on behalf of the town. So that's all I had. Does someone have a motion for?
Can I?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, no.
I totally forgot about you. That was my fault.
That's all right, that's.
That was my fault.
I've been forgotten for less. So I'm not sure if Mark mentioned this. Did you mention the faculty-student lip sync event?
No, I did not.
Okay, so that's happening at Westboro High School this Thursday, the twenty-seventh, seven PM. Faculty and student raising money for the World Central Kitchen and United Nations World Food Program. I hear it's supposed to be quite the event, so check that out. It's five-dollar tickets at the door and/or any donations. So that sounds lots of fun. On, just a shout out on the economic development front. The Quarter Nine, four ninety-five Chamber of Commerce will be hosting its expo. It is free to attend. That's April third from four to seven PM at the Doubletree. So for folks that want to attend and learn about businesses in the area, great, great chance to get out. And again, it's free to attend. I'd just say I'll echo thanks for all the attendance at town meeting and the way that we, as a whole body, conducted ourselves during some challenging discussions, that including the budget. And I hope that the budget discussions we had leading up to town meeting are really just the start of a continued work that I know this board knows that we need to do, working in collaboration with our town manager and her staff and hopefully across the street, literally with our school committee and schools. So hopefully, that's the start of continued conversation to, you know, for the benefit of our residents. And finally, I do look forward to our retreat and an opportunity to kind of set goals. I won't go into those now, but I'm looking forward to that with a new board. And welcome, Mark, to your first meeting. Well, other than town meeting, but this one, so.
Great, thank you, Shelby, and apologies again.
It's quite all right. Oh, but you need, are we doing all these? Oh, boy, okay, this is my first. Okay, so I would move that we go into executive session under Mass General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus the town of Westboro, Lax Media LLC and Lax Media M A LLC, Worcester Superior Court, case number two-two-eight-five, C V zero-one-two-eight-one, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court Case Number nineteen T L zero-zero-zero-seven-six-eight, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SPE LLC versus Town of Westboro at all, U S District Court, case number, or C A, number four colon twenty-three, C V one-two-zero-one-seven-m R G, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, U S Bankruptcy Court Case Number twenty-three dash four-zero-seven-zero-nine, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, including two thirty-one Turnpike Road and twenty Philip Street, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A seven, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of February twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five and March four, twenty-twenty-five.
And I declared that a open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating and negotiating position. And we will not be entering into executive, into open session at the end of the executive session. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moving seconded, roll call vote.
Keough, yes?
Marshall, yes.
Welchess. Silverberg, yes.
Johnson, yes. Thank you to Westboro TV as always.